Call to order the meeting, Town Council meeting of Thursday, January 26. Would Nicholas Roy, who's going to be coming, a candidate for the Eagle Scouts, would you honor us with starting the Pledge of Allegiance for this? So come on up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Paperwork in front of me tonight. Okay, announcements. Town council is scheduled to meet on the following dates. Monday, January 30th at 6:00 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room, a budget meeting. Thursday, February 9th at 7:00 PM here on the Matthew Thornton Room, a regular council meeting. Thursday, February 16th, here, a special meeting. And Thursday, February 23rd, another regular meeting. Any announcements, Eileen?
Yes, this is an important announcement for anybody that needs to register their vehicle in the month of February. Due to a State Department of Motor Vehicle software upgrade, the town clerk's office will not be able to conduct any motor vehicle registrations or related transactions from Friday, February 17th through Tuesday, February 21st. So Friday is a day that they will not be able to do it. Then there's Saturday and Sunday, and then there's Monday, the holiday, President's Day. And Tuesday, they will not be doing motor vehicle registrations either. And this is the same thing across the state. So all the DMV offices across the state and local motor vehicle and town clerk offices will not be doing, allowed to do registrations. Also, the Merrimack Police Department is currently accepting applications for the position of a full-time patrol officer. The deadline for application submission is Friday, February 3rd, 2017. Please contact Human Resources Department for further information. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, PFOA update. The only additional information, we've been notified that the blood test, the random blood test results are going to be available within a couple of weeks. I asked if that, did they meet the 200, and Eileen didn't have that information. They didn't say that. In fact, DES notified you?
Yes, the representative from the Department of Environmental Services came here today to tell me that, and it's the Department of Health and Human Services that's conducting the blood testing.
Well, that's interesting, because I got a reminder letter today.
So did I.
What, the reminder letter? Just came today.
So clearly, they probably, maybe we can make an assumption they haven't hit the 200, but they have some. So even that will be interesting. Okay, comments from the press or public. Okay, I'd like to read a letter that was submitted this appropriate time, because it's related to the garage warrant article that we'll be talking about later. "I was one of the 908 votes against the warrant article two years ago. At the time, I thought we should retire all the bonds before we spend 3.3 million on a new garage. There is no question we need a new garage at the existing site on Turkey Hill Road. I would encourage the town council to extend the bond to 20 years or more to mitigate the tax impact on our taxpayers and not to take the cheap way out for the proposal. Lastly, the DPW contract is in its last year. I'd like to see a better deal negotiated, given the better working conditions resulting from the new garage. What I see are union self-serving contracts paid for and by the private sector, who could never receive the same pay increase percentage elsewhere. Sincerely, Stephen A. Miller, 42 Belmont Drive." Just to let you know, Mr. Miller, the contracts are already down, and for another two years?
Another two years.
Right, so just to answer that one question. Thank you for your letter. Recognition resignations, and retirements none, appointments none, no public hearing, any legislative updates by state reps? Not seeing any. Town managers report.
The Merrimack Police Department would like to remind residents that the winter parking ban, which is still in effect until April 15th, 2017, vehicles cannot be parked on the roadways between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
That's it, short and sweet. No consent agenda, no old business. Boy, this is going to be a fast meeting. Shh. I just cursed it. We've got to be here till 11:00.
We'll be here, we'll be here till midnight now. Thanks a lot, man.
It won't be me. New business. Committee appointments, we have two, as soon as I said it, I knew. We have, submitted by myself and Vice Chair Finley Rathaus, town council to consider appointing the following individuals to town committees pursuant to Charter Article 4-8. Ralph Guerens for the Heritage Commission, full member, and Paul F. McLaughlin Jr. for an alternate membership for the planning board. I'll just address it quickly, and you can add anything you want. We interviewed both. Both are certainly well-qualified. Ralph, you're going to see in a moment, is wearing his, you'll see why he's interested in the historical Heritage Commission, because he's wearing a, I don't want to say authentic, but it is, authenticated, kind of Lexington Minuteman uniform, and you can say whatever you want when you come up after you say the pledge, the oath. He's been involved with historical kinds of things a long, long time, as evidenced by what you're going to see him wearing tonight. So clearly, that is a good fit. Paul McLaughlin has been a lifelong resident of Merrimack and is interested now, as he's becoming an adult in many ways, to be able to get involved in various concerns within the town. So he's interested in that alternate membership into the planning board. Do you want to say anything, Finley? You were at all the interviews.
Nothing actually more to offer. I'm looking forward to everybody hearing what Ralph has to say. And I'm always pleased when new young people come in to participate. So we definitely appreciate it, for sure. It's hard to get people to join up, so.
Yeah, it is nice to see younger people. We need to be replaced, you know that. And we like to see younger people come in, learning, and you will, there'll be a learning curve, but we all, you need to know that we always, this council appreciates the voluntary work that everyone does on the various commissions and committees. So, anybody have any questions about people? Okay, I'll accept a motion.
All at once, or?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move-
You want to do it, Paul wants to do it separate.
Separate?
We need to be clean.
Okay. Channeling our inner life boy, is that what you are? Okay. Madam Chair, I move that the town council appoint Ralph F. Guerens to be a full member of the Heritage Commission pursuant to Charter Article 4-8.
Second.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Mahan. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? No. 7-0-0. Did you want to say something?
I did, yes, please.
Sorry, go right ahead.
Mr. Guerens is such an impressive figure tonight, that I wondered if the people at home could see him.
When I do the oath, he has to come up.
Oh, okay.
So I'm going to have him in full regalia when he does that. Thank you, Jackie, though, that was, that's what I meant. Okay, a second?
Madam Chair, I would, I would move that the town council appoint Paul F. McLaughlin Jr. to be an alternate member of the planning board pursuant to Charter Article 4-8.
Second?
Second.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Keenick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You should abstain. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All those in favor say, wait, I didn't say that. All those in favor say aye. I already did that, okay. You confused me. Okay, challenge it.
Just for the, just for the record here, and in interest of full disclosure, I have lived in Reuben Cummings' grandfather's house for the last 40, 40 years, on Natta Creek Road.
Yep. So you're part of a historical figure yourself now?
I'm more like a hysterical figure, by other than that.
Here, here.
Well, when you only live 800 feet away from me, Tom, I could be.
Paul and Ralph, would you please come up here? Paul, we'll leave you first. She's going to lose control. Look at her, barely started. There you go. What I'd like you to do, read into here, raise your right hand, and read this.
I, Paul F. McLaughlin Jr., do solemnly swear and sincerely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as an alternate member of the Merrimack Planning Board, according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
We just need to couple of signatures. You have to sign here. So a housekeeping work we have to do, that's all. So sign there. Sign there, just put your name there. In the meantime, Ralph can come up. And I'm not sure where you need to stand to be able to be visible.
Right here. Can you get her from this angle or that?
From that angle, yeah. Oh, do you want to say a few words while we're waiting? Go right ahead.
Before moving to Merrimack 20 years ago, I lived in Lexington for 42 years, and we're just completely surrounded by history. And in 1975, I became a member of the Minuteman. So we do a reenactment of the Battle of Lexington every Patriots' Day, and I've been a char, everybody takes a character who was on the green. And my character is John Bridge Jr., who was a wealthy farmer, and his son founded the first education things in Lexington. We have two uniforms, I want to make this clear. I don't want to violate any Minuteman rules. We have one uniform, that's the fancy one, that we parade in and do ceremonies in. In fact, we've gone to two inaugural parades. Unfortunately, the second one, we went right behind the mounted force from Fort Myers. It was a little touch and go. So that one, that uniform, I can't wear without getting permission from the company. But this one is just a colonial uniform, and we can wear that whenever we want to at home, if we do. So this one is completely legal for me to wear. They try to be very authentic in the green, so if someone catches us with the cellphone, that is a bad thing. Not subject to court martial, but it's subject to ridicule, which is worse.
Since this is a short agenda, I just want you to come over here. Real quick, in 30 words or less, that quick story about how your position, where you had to run?
Oh, okay.
But one time, you were able to make a good deal?
Yeah. They expanded, if you've been, like Finley has, if you've been to the reenactment, it used to be just the acre of the green, but they found to accommodate the crowds, they wanted to make, expand it. And so expanded it into including the Harrington property. So when the British come and say, get off, go back to your homes and family, and you won't be harmed, lay down your arms, we have to turn around and run. Okay? Now, when I first joined, it was easy. Again, harder every year, but I kept the same character. Well, last year, one of the people who was killed couldn't make the ceremony, so they asked me to fill in right away, which was really good, because I could fall right down on the grass, the wet grass, and have them run over me, and then get up later on when the ceremony was over. Okay? But I have to say, we really get into the part, and it was very frightening, because you get 200 British soldiers running over our bodies. And they could step on us, stab us, and you can imagine what it was in real time. But I'm glad, I have two granddaughters who come and they tend to me when I'm underground. And I think that's the important part, you know, educating the young people about our heritage.
Exactly.
Thank you for sharing that. That short story was told to us during the interview, and I thought it was something that was worth noting. So please come up.
Yep.
I'd like you to read this out, raise your right hand and read this out.
I, Ralph Guerens, do solemnly swear, solemnly and sincerely swear, that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent on me as a full member, according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
It's right here? It's right here? Not John Handford.
Is the name Mike Ryan ringing a bell with you?
No.
Okay. That's, okay, he's one of the reenactors.
They went down about 14 years ago now.
Yeah, or he used to do it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I got my pen?
Oh, there's your pen, sorry about that. Yeah, I couldn't resist you telling that really quick story. Okay, next, Eagle Scout project presentation, submitted by Life Scout Nicholas Roy and Parks and Rec Director Matthew Kasperis. Matthew? So he's just presenting it here. Life Scout Nicholas Roy to present his Eagle Scout project, proposing to build an equipment storage shed for the benefit of MYA softball at Reed's Ferry Softball Field Number Two. So Nicholas, you can come on down. Are you all, is this your presentation with a computer? Okay. Wear a nice skirt, Nicholas, you can relax.
Yeah, you messed him up.
No, I probably did mess him up.
What are you worried about? These guys come up here like pros.
They always do. You're absolutely right.
Yeah.
Go right ahead, Nicholas.
Okay, so my name is Nicholas Roy, and this is my advisor, Mr. Jolly. I'm going to be making a proposal for my Eagle Scout project. Plan is to build an equipment shed for the girls' MYA softball team. Okay, so, I live here in Merrimack at 38 Craig Drive. I'm 15 years old, and I'm a Boy Scout Troop 424, and a Life Scout, which is right underneath the Eagle rank. And I'm pursuing my Eagle rank right now. So I will be constructing an eight-foot-by-12-foot equipment shed right next to Reed's Ferry Field Two. I have a picture of that later on. This was requested by Ms. Harry Ann Bowen, the program director of the MYA girls' softball team. They actually have a current shed now at Field Number One, but it is too far away from Field Two, and it is very overcrowded. So the project will fulfill the service project component of my Eagle Scout rank requirement. And since the fields are owned by the town of Merrimack, I need you guys' approval to start construction. So here are the two fields, Field One and Field Two. Field Number One is on the left, and Field Number Two is on the right. There is a very small field in the bottom left-hand corner. It's very hard to see, and obviously very small. So, okay, so here's a close-up of Field Number Two. That unnatural-looking white rectangle is my proposed location for the equipment shed. It's parallel with the dugout, and it is out of the way of the game, so it won't cause any problems. So here's a ground view of my proposed location. Sorry if it's a little hard to see, but it was a very sunny day. Yeah, so as you can see, it's parallel with the dugout and far enough out of the way of the game. So the area near the dugout is very uneven, so this picture is just showing the difference in height of the four corners that I'm going to have to work with and level them out. Underneath the shed, I'm going to remove the topsoil, so that we're left with the bare hard ground underneath. And I'm going to pack crushed stone and level off, so that it can withstand our harsh winters and other seasons. So there are a couple sheds around in Reed's Ferry, and my plan is to match them, so they look uniform. The shed-style roof is going to match the dugout, so it's just one big slant. It's going to have T-111 exterior sheathing, just like the other sheds. It's going to have the nice corner boards, like the other ones. They have architectural roof shingles that I'm also going to put on, and I'm going to have a paint scheme to match. So if you're not familiar with a shed-style roofing, here's basically what I'm going to do, except there won't be any windows on this one. So, yeah, that's essentially what it's going to look like. So on the floor, I'm going to use a two-by-eight-inch pressure-treated plywood, so that it will resist the weather and wear and tear. The wall framing, we'll use two-by-four-inch lumber, and the roof frame will be, will use two-by-six-inch lumber, with all framing being 16 inches apart. The roof pitch will also match the dugout, so it looks uniform with that. And they were asking for double doors, so it's going to be five feet wide and six foot eight inches tall, and with no windows. So a little about the cost. The estimated cost that I have is $1,540. I built in a 10% contingency plan, so it comes out to around $1,695. Of course, it will be no cost to you guys or the MYA. I will be raising the funds through bake sales, and I'm going to be trying an online fundraising GoFundMe. I'll be setting that up after I get all my approvals. Reed's Ferry Lumber has given us discounts in the past to other Eagle Scouts, and I was going to contact them and maybe even Home Depot to see if they'll give me any discounts. I will be providing the labor, of course, with other scouts and my friends and family. And any leftover funds that I raise will be donated to the Parks and Rec, so that it can be used in other ways. I have also provided you guys with a detailed materials list, if you want to go more in-depth with the finances. So in January and February, I'm going to be focusing on my approvals, so that I can get my project done by April 30th, the opening day for the softball season. I'm going to be spending March with fundraising, and April mainly being construction. Any questions?
Hopefully, no rain.
Right.
Not a lot of rain.
Right.
Prearranged.
Okay, so that's my presentation. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions? Tom?
Pure second guess, okay? The location, down the right, down, sorry. The location down the right field line. I'm just curious, did they, did anybody think about putting it right behind home plate? A fence there, and it would give equal, easier access for both dugouts, rather than having somebody trapped across the field.
Yes, we did look at that, but that ground is even more uneven than-
Worse, okay.
Yeah, it's a serious slant.
Yeah. That's a rough area to work in.
He had the answer for you, that's great. Jackie?
There's so many fine projects that you Scouts do, and I, for one, would like to participate in like the bake sale, you know, purchase and stuff, like bake sale stuff, if I knew when it was going to be and where. And I wondered if you could get all our emails, which is simple enough to do, and let us know when these things are going to happen.
Yeah, we could put it at the part of the announcements, the beginning of the meeting.
Okay. They usually happen around the shaws and market baskets around town.
To make it easier on him, if he just emails it to either Becky or Eileen, I think, and then-
And you can-
We can distribute it out to everybody. I think that'd be easier than trying to get seven emails.
Sure.
That'd be easier for him.
Dan?
I like Tom, I thought, and I wanted to second guess, but I assume that the MYA approved your site, the location, because it just seemed like maybe that's where parents were bringing their folding chairs, along that line. But if they're happy with it, it just, the way it's sticking out at the moment, it looks like it was just a little bit out of place, if not, you know, behind, I was thinking the same thing about putting it behind the dugout, but if they, they think it's a good location, then-
Right, they can, they can even still sit in front of it, so there's still enough room for that.
Okay. Great.
Tom?
So is it opening towards the field-
Yes.
-in order to have the shed roof be identical to the dugout?
Yes.
And it wouldn't make sense to have it open the other direction, just to not interfere with anybody sitting in front of it. The design of your foundation is obviously a major concern. I'm not sure whether you've gotten anybody in particular to help you with understanding how deep you need to go, or, I mean, you did say you were going to go down some amount, but you weren't very specific. Are you talking to anybody about requirements for being able to support? That's a fairly large shed.
Right.
And the expanse of it, so if you could talk a little more about your plan there, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I was just planning on getting rid of all the topsoil and just making sure that we get to the hard surface, and then we can even go a little deeper, but we're going to pack, you know, concrete and gravel to make sure that, you know, that it can stand and be sturdy and level.
Okay, because I've seen them have to go down two or three feet-
Right.
-just to get below the frost line, and maybe even farther than that, technically, but I don't know if we need that for a shed, but just curious if you're, I would think you have to go down more than six inches, or whatever the topsoil level is, so.
Generally, the sheds are floating, so it's kind of just, we'll look into it, we'll-
All right, well, I mean, I just hate to see it, you know, start warping in five years or something like that.
The building inspector would be glad to help you out with that. He's very good at that kind of advice, by the way.
Very good? You're talking about Fred?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Go.
Just more of a comment. Nicholas, congratulations on getting this, getting this far. I wish you much success with this project. And Mr. Jolly, I want to thank you for what you do day in, day out, to work with the youth of our community in this capacity, so.
They're awesome boys, they're a great group.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'll second that. I'm always impressed with not only quality, but the quantity of Eagle Scouts that this community grows. Well, it's amazing, and a lot of it has to do with the volunteers, of their mentors and various troops, so thank you to both of you.
You commend it at your age to be this far along. I mean, we have people coming in that have to hurry up, because they've got three months left.
Three months left.
So congratulations-
Thank you.
...on your advancement.
Excellent. Okay, I'll accept a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the town council approve the Eagle Scout project proposal of building an equipment storage shed for the benefit of the MYA softball field, at Reed's Ferry Softball Field Number Two, on behalf of Life Scout Nicholas Roy, and furthermore, that the town offer any assistance that may be required for him. that the town offer any assistance that may be required for him to perfect and complete the project.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by...
Second.
Tom Koenig. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, saying none, seven, zero, zero. And I think I have to sign something for you, don't I?
Jackie, can I be...
There's something I have to sign for you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if I have the paper with me right now, but I'm gonna check.
Okay. If you don't, that's okay, it could be done. Eileen Cabanel, you can bring it to the Town Hall. If you don't have it, that's okay. You can bring it to the Town Hall and Eileen can sign because she has the authority.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thanks, Nick.
Order the Arrow II?
Yep.
Sheesh. He's a busy guy.
We'll see him in the future.
Yeah, it's my invitation.
Talk about being focused.
Nick, you gonna marry my kind?
No.
Where do you go to school? Good for you.
Okay, onward to the next. Second quarter financial review submitted by Finance Director Paul T. McCully. Finance Director Paul McCully will review the key financial information of the quarter ending December 31st, 2016.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Good evening. Coming for you tonight to discuss the second quarter financial reports, the second quarter of the Town of Merrimack ended December 31st, 2016. I figured this was a good time to come in front of the council right before we start our preparation for the budget next week, so you get a feeling for where we stand in this budget, the 2016-17 budget, as we go forward. I would like to first say that there is sufficient appropriations and revenues that I believe will be hitting our revenue goals this year and we have sufficient appropriations so that I don't see us in danger of overspending our appropriations. Health insurance costs, you'll see that the health insurance cost has gone down about $200,000. That is because we made a change in the health insurance this year. Half the town went on a, the plan as of July 1st and the plan was a deductible plan, $1,000,[760.23][760.23]$3,000 deductible plan. And the other half, two-thirds of the other half, will be going on the plan as of January 1st, actually went on the plan as of January 1st, so we'll see more savings in the health insurance. Just a reminder that we did budget for the savings throughout the budget and the appropriations, so we are on, right on track with our health insurance estimates and costing for the 16-17 year. New Hampshire Retirement is up a little bit for Group One and Fire and Police, it's down. Police is down because of the vacancies and turnover that they have had in the, in the first half of this year. The reason why Fire is up, you'll see in a minute, I believe it's because of the overtime and as we heard on Monday night, worker comp claims have driven the overtime, so that's why New Hampshire Retirement is up. And in Group One, it was because of filling of vacant positions, so we are, we are almost 100% staffed in that Group One category, which includes everybody in Town Hall, DPW workers, solid waste workers. As I said, the overtime, as you'll see, there's a big spike in Fire. Fire overtime is $125,000 more at this time, this year than last year. One of the reasons being, like I said, is because of some of the worker comp claims and the, the solid aid staffing. We gave them an increase in their, their overtime last year in the budget of about $75,000 for the firefighter portion of it and there was some for the supervisors too, so that isn't included in this computation, but also because there's been a workers' comp serious, not a serious, but there's been workers' comp claims and people out on workers' comp for the first six months. Everything else is tracking normally. Highway, you'll see there's a little spike this year. Well, we can't always have a winter where we have, what, maybe 10 snowstorms for the whole year, so that is to be expected. We've had some snowstorms in covering it, but that's well within our budget that we budgeted for overtime with the Highway Department. For our revenues comparison, the auto registrations are tracking a little bit higher than, than previous year by roughly $100,000.
That's amazing.
But remember that we also increased, in this year's 16-17 budget, we also increased the amount of revenue that we were expecting to get from auto registrations. And that trend can change depending on what happens out of Washington. I hear there's some talking about tariffs and things on foreign vehicles, so, you know, that all plays into a part of our auto registrations with, with what goes on and what cars people are buying and the cost of the cars we're buying. I'd like to really zoom in on the next two interest and building permits. As you can see, this chart's a little skewed because of the amount of money that comes into revenues for, for our auto registrations. So breaking out, excuse me, interest and building permits, we are finally starting to see an uptick in interest receipts from our banks, which is a good thing.
What, from zero to one?
Zero to maybe two. But as you'll see, we are, in 2008 and '09, we had a great year with interest, but, but we've been on a slow downward trend. Now we're starting up the, the other side of the hill and actually we're rebounding and I think in, in this category, we might exceed what our revenue projection was for the year if everything stays the same. Building permits, even though they're a tick under last year at this time, by about $6,000, I still see that we will definitely meet our $100,000 budget that we put into building permits and I think if everything, once again, that we heard Monday does come to fruition, we'll be, we'll exceed that, but even if one or two of those projects do come in, I think we'll be right around the $100,000, maybe a little bit more than the $100,000. Like I said, the town is in good financial shape. We just received our audit. The audit came back. I like to say it was a clean audit. I'd like to thank my staff for doing a good job with, with the auditors and there was only one senior management point that they wanted to make and that was the library. Library has trust funds and they would like to see those trust funds reconciled more regularly on a monthly basis instead of a quarterly basis, so working with a vet to get that process and start that process, to get that process going. And it wasn't a significant event, but they would like to see that and they think by doing that, it will also help make that portion of the audit go a little bit smoother than what was being done the last couple of years. I do have to say, once again, that it is a clean audit and it's the third year in a row that the Town of Merrimack basically received a clean audit from, from the auditing firm with really no management notes or recommendations. Any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none. Nope, Tom?
I was just trying to put together a question. The, looking at your summary by departments...
Yes.
The percent of budget remaining for solid waste disposal is really low. Did, did we front-end some costs there or can you help?
Yeah, the, the solid waste says it has about 16% left and usually around 50. Would solid waste, at the beginning of the year, we appropriate or, or put a PO in to put money aside for both the gasoline and diesel, the vehicle fuels and the solid waste tipping fees? And the majority portion of solid waste is, is the tipping fees, so that's why we only have 15% left. Most of the money is tied up in the tipping fees. And I believe out of the $555,000 in encumbrances, around $500,000 of that money is tied up between both the tipping fees and gasoline and diesel for that department.
Okay, so, so basically you did front-load.
Yeah, we front-loaded.
You encumbered the money.
We, we encumbered the money so that they, you know, we know that our tip, our trash disposal is covered.
And the debt service, you just pay all your debts at the beginning of the year, right?
Well, we have, we have two times we pay debt service. We have a August payment and a January payment, so at this time, what happened was the $25,000, that $26,000 you see there is the January interest that we had to pay for January for this year.
Okay. You do a great job and I appreciate it. I just thought I would...
Thank you.
Vocalize some of those things just so that people could understand that we are paying attention. Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
I guess we can move on.
Thank you, Paul, appreciate it.
To the Highway Garage presentation submitted by Public Works Director Kyle Fox. I'm sure he'll have, perhaps have other people. Miles Highway Garage options to be presented to the Town Council. We have pictures and...
It's a good thing I didn't get my pack, there's no backup.
Could you pass this back while we... Thank you.
What I was just saying is that the camera needs to see them so that people on, at home, even though we have our own things and there'll be things on the screen, it's difficult to see the detail, so that camera needs to, to be able to focus in on that.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Town Councilors. We're really happy to be here tonight to talk about the progress we've made in the Highway Garage proposal for the Town of Merrimack. Tonight presenting will be myself, Public Works Director. Lori Barrett is our Operations Manager for the Highway and Equipment Maintenance Divisions. Paul McCully will speak a little bit about the financing of the project later on in the presentation. And we have Doug Proctor here from H.L. Turner Group, who's the Chief Architect for the project.
Okay, just, just logistically, if we're gonna be using those if the lights are out, the camera's not gonna be able to pick up on them.
Yeah, Chris will turn the lights on when appropriate.
You'll turn it on when it's appropriate? Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Members of the public might wonder why, why I, because this is my budget, why I would propose a public works garage again when it was done three years ago. I'd just like to point out that it, it passed by a majority, but it needs a two-thirds vote. And the reason why is because it would really be irresponsible of me to not present it again because, because the garage is in deplorable condition and it's not getting any better. So we, we have modified things and taken into consideration the concerns of some of the pub, members of the public, that one of the bonds be eliminated so that this can slip into where that bond place was and, and I just, I just think it's a critical project.
And I think it's also due to be added, you mentioned the bond. The last bond payment is when, Paul?
You'll do that.
You'll get into that. Okay, but I think for the public, it's important to understand that there is the retiring of one bond, bond, before the new one comes and I think that needs to be highlighted in response to what you mentioned.
Thank you.
And we'll highlight it when you say it. Twice, more than twice. Go right ahead, Kyle.
Thank you. So this is a fairly comprehensive presentation. It's fairly long, we'll try to be as brief as we can, but we want to make sure we get as much of the detail out there as we can as well, 'cause it's, as Eileen stated, it's a really important project for those of us who work at the garage and it also has benefits for the town folks and our ability to do our jobs. So we're, we're really excited about this progress that we've made recently and we hope to carry it through in April. Where, where the project really stands is, three years ago, there was a committee formed sponsored by Counselor Yakovav at the time and they did a lot of really great work and they did a lot of space studies, interviewed members of the town, members of the Highway Garage, did, did a lot of really great and, and hard work to develop a plan with which to move forward. And as Eileen said, it, it went onto the ballot and it got a majority of the vote, but not the two-thirds majority required to get a bond. So encouraging news, but not as good news as we hoped. In the meantime, we've taken all of the work the committee did and working with H.L. Turner, who's a great company that's done a lot of buildings and worked with a lot of towns on successful projects. We've taken it to the next step where tonight, we're actually gonna present to you three different concepts, actual floor plans of, of how the layout will be, the proposed layout would be in the actual garage and, and some real good funded numbers. So it's quite a bit more detailed than, than we had the last time. I'll, I'll start by talking a little bit about the current facility. The current building was built in 1973, which means it's 43 years old and it was constructed to meet the needs of the town at that time as the town was changing from a road agent form of, of maintenance to a public works department. It was a pre-engineered, it is a pre-engineered steel frame building, which means it wasn't designed specifically for us. It's, it was, it's a cookie cutter design that was placed on the site, steel beam construction with steel siding. In the mid-1980s, two additional maintenance bays were added for the equipment maintenance function that we perform. The current building, it's about 8,800 square feet as a footprint. In the building itself, through the years, the highway staff built a second floor, we're calling it a mezzanine here, so the actual usable space in the garage is about 11,700 square feet. And one of the interesting things I found out in doing some research for the presentation is when the, when the town changed from a road agent form to a public works department, the way the town got their initial equipment was by buying the old used equipment from the road agent at the time, so... Merrimack has always been a...
Which was a common practice at that time.
I'm sure, yeah. So here's a good picture of the current facility. On the left-hand side here, this is where the administration, the administration and personnel spaces are. That's where the mezzanine is located. On the left-hand side of the building, you can see the second floor air conditioners sticking out of the windows. The middle part of the building, those two bays are primarily where Highway keeps their trucks and does some maintenance work there and the right two bays are the bays that were added in the 1980s for the equipment maintenance function. Some demographics that we can talk about. In 1973, the population in Merrimack was 10,638. Today, it's about 25,648, which is a 256% increase. Roads in town at that time, 1973, we had about 109 centerline miles of road. Today, we've got 170 centerline miles of road, 156% increase. Numbers on a, on a screen can tell part of the story, but we came up with some visual graphics to try and really show the, the change that's happened in, in the last 43 So the picture on the left shows all these little blue dots and, and colored areas represent all of the buildings that existed in Merrimack in 1973. And the board to the right, the blue lines show the public roads in 1973. So that's the 170, 109 centerline miles of road we had at the time. Moving forward to today, the pink lines and the pink... the pink lines and the pink dots on the second one indicate all of the houses and the roads that have been added since the Highway Garage was built. And there's really, we'll get to this more in the presentation, but this is really the driver of the need of the project. The Highway Garage has plenty of issues, but it's just not big enough to support the town for the size it is today.
This is the map I was talking about the other night. Visual representation says a lot.
Picture, thousand words.
Yeah.
So moving on with the demographics, at the time, the garage was built, we had about 10 employees. Now we have 27 full-time employees staffed at the garage. And in the summer, we had four part-time, or four full-time summer maintainers. We had about 15 pieces of equipment in 1973. Now Highway alone has more than 40. And at the facility itself, through the equipment maintenance function, we maintain over 200 pieces of equipment from all the departments townwide. That includes Police Department, Fire Department, the Town Hall vehicles, and of course, our own Public Works vehicles.
Excuse me, when did they start maintaining the town's vehicles?
I can get that answer for you. I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, they didn't add the bays until the mid-'80s.
Right.
So were they doing the, some of that work before and how much of it was being done? Because I seem to recall there was, if there was anything being done, it was on the department's own equipment and not everybody else unless it was an emergency of some sort.
Yeah, I can look that up, Tom. I don't know the answer as to when the maintenance function started.
So, and this suggests that the Fire Department, Police Department, and Town Hall have like 160 vehicles amongst them?
Correct.
And equipment.
Yeah, it's vehicles and equipment, but primarily vehicles, yes.
Well, but sidewalk plows would belong to DPW already, right?
Correct.
Is that part of your 40-plus or?
It is.
It's a lot. I would've thought you guys had a larger piece, but... Okay.
Talking about some of the issues of the garage, as I mentioned, with the visual displays, the, the garage is just playing too small for our current workforce. Additionally, there's really poor ventilation. Anyone who's been there has seen that the garage bays butt right up against the office spaces. There's no barrier break for the diesel fumes, the dust that's created. And it, you know, it really, really makes a tough working environment for the office folks over there. The electrical is out of code and not sufficient to current demand. One of the big issues we have during winter time is all of our trucks are currently outside and they're all diesel trucks, so we have block heaters to plug them in, so they'll start in the winter when we come in for a storm. Fairly often, we blow breakers on the trucks when we come in and, and unfortunately, the heaters haven't been running, which causes delays for us to get the trucks running. And it's not for lack of trying. We've hired electricians to help us and it's just not enough power currently available for us. There's also inadequate insulation. It was, the insulation is from 1973 and hasn't been improved. There's also a poor layout. It's not ADA accessible to the mezzanine level certainly. And all of these employees really affect the, the safety of the employees, as well as the public who comes into the garages as well.
Kyle?
Yes?
Do you have any exhaust system in that building?
We'll get to that.
Okay.
Yes, it's not very impressive, though.
Well, I, you know, okay, okay, fine, fine, 'cause I'm thinking, Fire Department, you know, it's plugged in and when they fire that up, the thing automatically vents. I, I didn't see anything like that
You'll be impressed. Stay tuned. Singular. So, so part of the proposal is to renovate the existing building. This is one of the areas I wanna stress. I don't think it was stressed well enough the last time we did this.
I agree.
The, the building itself, being a, a prefabricated steel structure, the, the steel is in fine shape. The structural steel, supporting the building, that, there, there's nothing wrong with that. The issues are plenty, but that's not one of them. So we intend to reuse the facility. As part of the renovation, we're proposing to put a new metal roof on it, put on some new siding. We're hoping to do vinyl or cement board. And that, we'll get into that in more detail when we go over the three options of the new building. A new ceiling infrared heating system, a new fan and, and louver exhaust system, and electrical upgrades to meet the current code. Primarily, we'd use the new building for vehicle storage, the-
Use the new building for vehicle?
I'm sorry, the rehabbed building, the existing building. Thanks, Tom. The existing building for vehicle storage. The value of Highway's fleet alone is about $4 million. It's quite an investment for the town. And obviously, keeping it more undercover will help to protect that investment. Will also improve our response time in storms. Currently, we have room for three tur- three trucks in our current facility that we can load up with sand or salt or sand-salt mix. So when we get an off-hour storm, the guys will come in. Three guys can head out on the road right away because the, they're already loaded up. The rest of the trucks, because you can't keep material in the trucks and have them stored outside, particularly over a weekend, because the material will freeze up or get wet and then it won't come out of the trucks. So all the other trucks have to wait for the loader to load them one by one before they can get out onto the road and provide, start providing safety response for, for the roads. We, we predict, you know, between a half an hour to an hour time savings in our response time if this plan goes through. The other component we would use the existing building for is vehicle washing. Right now, we have floor drains in the existing building. That's where we do our vehicle washing. Due to funding of the project, we don't have enough money in, 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 in our budget to have a wash bay in the new building, so we're gonna keep that function in the old building. And obviously, washing vehicles is again critically important to extending their lives of the, of the fleet. Obviously, they're putting out the salt and, and in the worst environments at all times, so. We, it's definitely an area of focus for us. We're estimating the renovation cost of the new building to be about $439,000. This is a little schematic of what we predict the, the building use to look like after it's done. Currently, the, if you recall from the front picture, the four bays run up and down in this picture, and then this area is where the administration part is. We'll be gutting the whole building, taking out all of the administration parts, so the entire facility will be used for vehicle storage. In addition, we have a little cold storage area that you'll see pictures of later in the back here. And we intend to use that to store our sidewalk snow machines, so we'll be able to have storage for that as well. In the corner, we've got a little space for the sign trailers to keep those out of the elements as well. Those are the big flashing signs that we put down at Watson Park and other areas in town.
Bill, you had a question? Just a quick question, Kyle. According to the schematic you have up there, it looks awfully tight.
It is. But these guys are professional drivers and they can, they can squeeze things into places you wouldn't believe.
I'm, I'm not questioning their, their skill or their professionalism. I'm just thinking logistically that we're, we're gonna be asking the community to bond this particular project and to bond something that doesn't provide a level of space that would allow a new person that may get hired to be able to navigate a truck in and out would cause me a little bit of concern. They'll be in charge of the dump trucks, not the plows. So they can drive it in and out streets. Not my responsibility how, how DPW is administrated.
Yeah, and, and keep in mind, Bill, this is the, the existing building. We're kind of stuck with the
I understand.
footprint we have. In addition to this, we will also be storing, and we'll talk about this a little further along in the presentation, we'll also be able to store vehicles inside of the new building during the winter in similar fashion to the way we do today. And one final thing just to mention on this. This is just a concept at this point. We like the flow of having just two end, end bay doors versus the four that we currently have from a heating savings standpoint. When you open up four bay doors, all of the heat rushes right out. Having just two bays on the ends will help to keep some of the heat in. During the final design, we're really gonna nail down which version we want, which, which is better for our operation? The two doors on the ends, or is it better for us to keep the existing doors and just add a fifth door over here on the front of the building? So we haven't fully ferreted out what the final design will be. So this is just one concept.
I agree with you with the two doors.
Thank you.
I do agree with you on that. Tom?
Yeah, so will the mezzanine be gone?
Yes. Yeah, the, the building will be completely gutted. Now we're gonna get into a little bit of, of comparing what we have today. And there'll be a, some picture shows and then leading into what we're proposing. And we've broken it out into four distinct areas or uses of the building. The first use area is the administration space, which includes our foreman offices, our operations manager's office, and conference room area. Currently, we have about 1,250 square feet of that kind of space. And we're actually reducing the space in the new building proposal to just over 1,000 square feet. And the reason we can do that is the, the way the mezzanine was constructed, there's, it was poorly designed and there's a lot of wasted space. So by creating a new floor plan, we can operate just as efficiently and gain a conference room, which we don't currently have. And, and it'll be a much better space. Now Lori's gonna kinda talk through some of these pictures and, and give you an idea of the current conditions that, that the folks are working in.
Hello. So this is our current recession area. This is where the public will enter through this door. As you can see, this is Betsy's working area. She's not separated from the public in any way. It's often cold and drafty in this space. And she has, we have electric problems in this area also. Running a few pieces of office equipment at the same time will cause problems. Yeah, there's some cords there hanging up for you. This also doubles as our dispatch area for winter storms. It's our Storm Central. Because the foremen's offices are upstairs, they're separated from the operations. So during storms where the radios are here, the telephones are here, we have a computer for them to watch the weather, they will come down here and this space tends to get very busy during winter storms. This is the operations manager's office. This is upstairs in the mezzanine. It also doubles as the conference room. Up here, being on, upstairs, we have heating issues, no control. So by the afternoon, it won't be unusual to get up to 95 degrees in my office. The dust and it is extremely noisy. It's also fumes from the garage, which are right outside these windows. These are our existing shared foremen's offices. They're very cramped. There's not much space for meeting with employees. And they are also upstairs. I'll show you the stairs. This is the set of stairs that you have to go up to meet the foreman. And this is the operations manager's office over here.
Going into what we're proposing, as I mentioned, the, the new layout that's being proposed is much more efficient. And we would end up having, one thing that we don't have now is a public entry point where the public could come in, get out of the weather, and be greeted by the secretary and, and tended to in, in a better condition without crowding into the, the secretarial space. Secretary would be located right here in the corner. We've got operations manager here. We have a conference room for meetings that, we, we just don't have a private space now for any type of meeting activity that we need to do. The two highway foremen would be located here and the equipment maintenance foreman will be located here. Nice, distinct layout. And we'll get into more how all the layouts tie together, but like I said, we're just going through each of four distinct use spaces initially. Moving on to the common space, this is one of the biggest areas of change in the proposed, in the proposal. This area, these areas include the entry festival, which I just showed you, but also includes lobby, locker room space, showers, toilets for both male and females, for the staff and public toilets, the lunchroom and training room areas and, and a kitchen. Currently, we have about 830 square feet and we're proposing to more than double this space to almost 1,800 square feet.
So this is our existing entry into, as you can tell, right into the garage for the public. This is cause for concern, obviously. They're walking right into any of our operations on any given day. Could be welding, could be grinding, could be washing trucks. So there's no separation from the public from the garage right now. This is our break room. It doubles as our training room. And it is our kitchen area also. It can at any time house 27 workers. There's poor ventilation and there's no space for rest during extended storm hours. Our break room kinda spills over into our garage area with our picnic table. And as you can see, this causes for narrow walking areas, which is always a concern for us, slips, trips, and falls. In this area, this is shot from the, the opposite direction. I wanted to just show you how close our break room picnic table was to our chainsaw fixing table and our flammable cabinet.
Yeah, yeah. If you get a stale hoagie, you need something to do with it.
This is our current locker room. This is our co-ed locker room. It leads to the compressor room, which is over here, and our cold storage out here. This is our exhaust, this one fan on this wall.
That's your question, Tom. There it is.
Yeah, well, you know.
It's either that or open the bay doors.
It's a good thing we're not covered by OSHA.
You got that right. It doesn't mean that the things that are covered by OSHA shouldn't be, though.
Right, right. This is our existing bathroom. This is the only shower unit that we have. That is our attempt at making it green.
It looks like a tree is to decorate a curtain.
Yes.
Thankfully, it's not mold.
This is for the men's area, but that is the only shower provided. We do have two other toilets in the building. There are two women, myself and Betsy.
Before you move on, Lori, could you go back on real quick? Also, right there, also look, they're keeping the janitorial supplies in the shower. So there's no room-
If you're in the shower, you can do it with them up, right?
That's right. And there's, there's no design space in the current facility for janitorial supplies.
And I'll point out, this bathroom is used by 25 people, 29 in the summer.
Thanks for sharing that. These are the other- We're trying to make the picture-
Did I say TMI or what?
I thought the pictures were TMI, but... The other two bathrooms is what- The other two bathrooms, the one on the left is the one off the reception area. And the one on the right is up in my office, in the operations manager's office. And Kyle likes me to point out, the raised flooring, it's built around the air ducts. So we kinda popped it in there.
It's literally the throne.
That gives new meaning to hot seat.
Actually, I was gonna make a comment. These pictures actually look like there's more room than there really is. Cause I'm looking at some of the rooms and I'm going, that looks bigger than I remember. Like the common space. I don't, maybe I was there for an event or something. But it was really crowded and it seemed like much smaller than this, so. Just to add that, really, in reality, that's even more crowded than it appears.
A picture adds 10 square feet. Sorry. So this is what we're proposing for a common space. We'll have a training room, which is much bigger than our current space with a kitchen adjacent to it, kinda separating the spaces, both for safety and for practicality purposes. Down the hallway from there, we've got a nicely sized locker room for as many workers as we have. There's also a women's locker room, separate. And then we've got an additional men's and women's toilet for public and other staff to use that may come in.
What's that one kinda plans?
Yeah, this is a little room for planned storage.
Storage.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yes, Jack.
I do notice that there's no door from either the men's or the women's rooms into the locker rooms.
Right, right. The locker room has, I, thank you for bringing that up, I should've added that. So the spaces you see here in the kinda greenish blue, the men's locker room and the women's locker room, those include lockers, showers, and toilet facilities.
And can you get from one to another?
You can't, no.
With that going out in the wall?
Right.
Yeah. I won't have to anyway, cause I don't have to go near there. That settles that.
Proceed.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the maintenance bay space, which is the biggest area of the garage. This is, this contains our highway shop and our maintenance shop and the main maintenance bays, fluid storage, the location of the air compressor, appropriately located where it should be, tire storage, parts and supply storage. And this area is proposed to increase from about 7,500 square feet up to about 9,400 square feet.
So I am standing on the mezzanine, looking down into our garage. We are storm ready at the end of the day right now. We can fit three loaded trucks and a loader in the bays for the highway, on the highway garage side, and also the sidewalk machine. So this is what it looks like at the end of the day. It's very hard to maneuver between equipment and trucks. We can only fit three.
I just wanted to point out that this was not staged. We didn't just put a bunch of equipment in there to make it look like it's cramped. This is actually, she took a picture a night before a storm.
Yeah, we do this at the end of every day, depending on what the weather is going to. If we're anticipating ice, if we're anticipating snow, that's how we load our trucks in anticipation. We can only get three trucks in at, out of 18.
Oh yeah, I, probably a stupid question. The salt shed is across the yard. Does, do you have to load that up and then go across and then load up the trucks inside? How does that work?
The truck drives to the salt shed, loads up there.
Loads up at the salt shed? Well, what do you mean then, the loader in the garage?
We keep the loader, we store it inside so that it's ready to go.
So that it's warm, okay.
And dry.
And dry. That makes sense, thank you.
Okay, so I am still on the mezzanine, but now I'm looking down at our friendly picnic table. And this is the highway workshop area. Again, this is our chainsaws work, bench. This is our clean laundry. This is where we're working on some picnic tables this winter. These are our plow blade. So this is pretty cramped also. We have to shift each day as we try to fit in a new project. We move out the trucks and we move in the picnic tables. So again, this is a constant shuffle. This is our cold storage Kyle had mentioned earlier. And right now, we use it to store our seed and fertilizer. We also store our roller. It does have a bay door in the back. And it's also the second set of stairs up to the mezzanine. This is our equipment maintenance bay. I wanted to show you what it looks like when we have a six wheeler in there with their wing plow down. Once that happens, there is no access around it. The other thing I wanted to mention was that while there are storms going on, we have to concentrate on our plow trucks and other, the other departments, because there's no space to get them in, have to be scheduled or pushed out. This also shows another picture of our maintenance bays. I wanted to show you our narrow walking path. And this is the door over to highway. Anytime you go through those doors, you need to be careful. You never know what's on the other side, a piece of equipment, a plow. So you always have to be cautious. This is a picture of our maintenance bays. We've got a six wheel dump truck, a one ton, and a pickup. And you can see how crowded it is now. Imagine a ladder truck or the tractor trailer in there. And you can also see that, I'd like you to notice the bay height in this one. Because we end up taking a lot of equipment outside in the good weather so that we can lift it higher, so we can get underneath it and work safely. This is our equipment maintenance working bay. We call it, we do our welding in here, our painting in here, we have our drill presses. As you can see, it's not well lit. It's not well ventilated and the walls leak. Here's equipment maintenance foreman's office. He does all his part ordering and updating of his software and maintenance records here. He's also in the same room as our parts inventory. And the mechanics use this as their break room. There's four mechanics and a foreman that share this space.
And I'll just add, of course, they use that as their break room because there's no room in the other area, cause the highway employees are there. So this is what we're proposing for the new space. We've got some dedicated space for tire storage, part storage, and fluid storage here on the outside of the building. We've got our highway shop. This is the area in the current facility where the overflow picnic table is and where the plow blades and everything. So this would give us a nice dedicated space for that, those types of work efforts. The welding shop and fabrication shop would be in this maintenance shop area here. And then these other brownish areas here are some of the secure storage for our inventoried parts. Naturally, having as many vehicles as we do, our equipment maintenance folks carry quite a bit of inventory so we can fix equipment as it breaks down. We have to have quite a bit on hand, so. We keep, we do keep a inventory system and that's where we would keep that secure storage. Right now, as you saw on the last slide, this is all of the inventory equipment. And it's secure from the standpoint that only the equipment maintenance folks have a key for this office. But it's open all day and it's, you know, it's still not that secure. And again, to an earlier point, the public can walk right into this garage and there's really no separation because of the space layouts now. So, and I'm not insinuating, we have a problem with inventory. We have good control and we do a really great job with it. But it just prevents any, the possibility of any issues coming up in the future.
Can I make an assumption that the proposed maintenance bays, they're high, they're taller? To allow for that maintenance bays?
They are.
Because right now, you have to do a lot of things outside. I remember that from even the open house you had. So this would allow for the elevation of?
Yeah, currently, the bays are 16 feet tall in the equipment maintenance side. On the highway side, they're only 14 feet tall. And what we're proposing, when we get to the options, the option we're proposing would have a minimum clear space of 20 feet.
And would it have hydraulics within the building?
What do you mean by hydraulics?
Lift.
Yes. Yeah, the, we currently have two permanent lifts, permanently, two fixed lifts and two sets of portable lifts. All of those would be transferred to the new building.
Okay, excellent.
So right now, the current bays from front to back in the existing building are 68 feet. And as Lori mentioned, you could see with all the equipment, the walking through this area was very, very tight and sometimes not possible, depending on which equipment we have in there. The proposal is to extend this distance by seven feet. The new bays would be 75 feet long instead of 68. That would give us the additional walking room that we need to operate efficiently. And that's a big part of where the additional 2,000 square feet comes in, is that space right there. Yes.
Kyle, you, the office space that the maintenance people are using, is that on the ground floor?
It is.
And if you're gonna raise the roof 20 to 20 feet or something like that in this area, you're gonna double up on like your part storage area? Or how are you gonna utilize that space over the top or are you planning to?
That's a great question. We haven't got to that level of detail in the, in the design yet. We're kind of at the 30% design stage, which is getting the space allocation. As you can see, we're very good at fitting things into tight spaces and we will still need to be creative in how we operate and how we store things. So I'm quite sure we'll do some multi-storage storage.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we'll be very creative with it. Sure.
Bill?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Kyle, can you tell me, probably shouldn't promote somebody's business, but Valvoline Auto Change has those bays where they got the, they got the tech working down in the, in the foundation where you just drive in, there's somebody below that's, that's working underneath. Was there any consideration of creating the bays so that you did not have to have that much space in the air and therefore you could have your technicians or your maintenance guys be working, you know, into the foundation of the facility?
We briefly talked about it, but we didn't consider it too seriously. One of the advantages that a Valvoline has, most of their vehicles are about the same size. Our vehicles vary in size by so much that we can't really get a one-size-fits-all operation. So we kinda ruled that out.
Okay.
I don't know.
Doug, do you have anything to add on costs for that? Yeah?
It would just add slightly to the foundation cost if you decided to do something like that. But it's, it's another idea.
We can certainly explore that, Bill. Thank you for the, for the question.
Okay, thank you.
The final of the four space areas we'll talk about is the building support function. That includes a janitorial closet, which won't be the shower, the plumbing and fire protection.
Maybe you should put one in there, a big one, just so they feel at home or something.
We could. The mechanical closet and the electrical room. Currently, we have 186 square feet. We're proposing to go up to about 616 square feet.
This is the compressor room that's behind the locker room we talked about earlier. When you walk in to the left is the compressors, which are servicing the equipment maintenance, which is on the other side of the building. They are very noisy, they're located underneath my office and next to the locker room. And to the right is the electrical panels. Here we have our water heater. This is located in a closet off of the break room. And on the right, we have our fire service panel and our telecommunications. And that is located in the cold storage in the back room in the corner.
So this area is fairly straightforward. Just three little block rooms. The water heater would be in a bigger room than it is now. I believe it was about a two and a half foot square room closet. So that'd be appropriate space that if somebody actually needed to fix the water heater, they could get to it. We'd have a dedicated electrical and IT room. And then the mechanical room would house the compressor and, and the HVAC units and things of that like. So I kinda started off at the beginning of the presentation. I mentioned there were three options that we looked at with the Turner Group. Some of the considerations as we were going through the process were whether to go with a steel building like we have currently, or do we look at the timber option? We looked at a bunch of different layouts of spaces. And we thought a lot about the aesthetics and the function of the exterior and the building as a whole. The option one that we looked at, here's a picture, the front and rear elevations of the proposal. The administration space is here with the flat roof over it. And then the maintenance bays were here to the right. This is proposed as a steel building. The pros for option one were it gave us the most space layout. The steel construction allowed that pitched roof, which would allow us a lot of headroom to do some various things that we can't do right now. One of the features it would certainly allow would be, we could bring the ladder truck in and actually put the ladder up to do some maintenance on it. Not all the way, obviously, but we could get it up so that they could work under it and do some better maintenance than we can right now. Another pro to that option is the roof line pitches away from the bays. Our current facility has the roof lines pitching towards the front of the, and the rear of the building, which means every time the snow falls off the building, it's in front of the bays and we have to get the snow out of the way for ourselves. The cons to option one, it's because of the size of the building and because it's a steel construction, it was more expensive, which would limit the amount of money that we had available to rehab the existing building. And being a steel building, we'd have that industrial look in a residential kind of area. Option two, similar to option one, steel building, the big pitched roof, again, gives us plenty of headroom should we wanna do any, any work on, on bigger vehicles and the ladder truck and the like. It's one continuous building, though there would be separation from the maintenance bays to the administration office. So just because it looks like a continuous building, there would be a definite air break from one to the other to keep the problems that we have currently from happening. Yes?
Yes, Eileen.
I just, I know you're gonna get to this afterwards, but I think it's important to say that right now, that option one is larger than option two by quite a bit. So that's what gave it more of an expense, even though these both are steel buildings.
Thank you, Eileen. So the pros to option two, it still gives us adequate space, though not as much as, as option one. Again, steel construction allows for the high pitched roof. And the roof, again, pitches away from the bays. The cons, again, because it's a steel building, it's more expensive, leaving less funds for the full rehab of the existing building. And we've still got a building with an industrial look. Option three is a timber construction building. Again, we've got our administration space over here on the left. We've got all our base space on the right. Uh, the roofs, roof would be constructed of, um, truss joists, uh, to be able to get the spans that we would need to have the, the clear space to do the work we need to. Obviously, this limits the amount of, of headspace as compared to the steel structures. Uh, we'd still, like I said before, have 20 feet of clear space, which is what we need and certainly better than what we have today. The pros, again, it gives us the adequate space. Options two and three have basically the same floor plan. Certainly has a nice residential look with the either vining, vinyl or cement board siding. Um, it'd certainly be a lot more attractive to fit into the residential neighborhood out on Turkey Hill. Timber construction certainly opens up the project to more competitive bidding. Uh, there's a lot more contractors that can work with timber than can work with steel. Um, and, and this would allow, option three would allow us the full amount of money we need to do the, the rea, rehabilitation of the existing garage. The cons to option three are, um, the roof's pitched towards the garage bays. That would be a maintenance headache for us, um, and lower headspace than what we could have. But again, I wanna emphasize that even though it's lower, it's still adequate for what we need. So this table is just a rundown of, of the three options, kinda side by side showing, um, a comparison. You can see option one, um, has almost 1,000 square feet more than option two and three. And as Eileen pointed out, that was the big driver in the price increase from option one over the other two. Um, the new building costs range, um, from a little over $2 million for option one to about 1.7 million for option three. And the, one of the key, uh, numbers to, I wanted to point out was this third row, which is the existing building renovation budget. With each of the options, option one would leave us about $20 a square foot for the rehab. Option two, 30, and option three, 50. And if you remember back to our first, uh, among the first slides, when I talked about the proposed renovation, the needed budget for that was 440,000, which is what really drives us to the right of this chart. Um, the site work for any of the three options is about 250,000. Uh, the soft costs are about the same for each. That's the engineering, um, buying what new equipment we need. We're gonna save all the equipment we can from the existing building, the lifts and, and other things, office furniture that's in good shape. Um, it also includes building, uh, commissioning, um, and all those other ancillary costs, contingency costs are in there as well. So the bottom line, um, we were trying, the, the, the goal of, of our option choices were whichever way we went, we wanted to kinda stick to the budget that was proposed of the, the last go around, which was about 3.3 million dollars. And you can see all three options, um, fit within that budget.
Dan?
I, I, I...
Lost some words?
No, trying to be, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be good. I am. I just don't, I just keep hearing the numbers about trying to keep under a budget and trying to keep a number and, and everything I'm seeing, I'm, I'm just seeing cheap. And I, I, I along with any of the council that's been here since 2010, which is my style, we've all, everyone, I don't, can't recall one single counselor ever not being for a new highway garage. And I, I just don't know if the 3.0 million or something came from one of us or somebody. I, I, I'm just a little out of loss on, on this budget constraint. I don't, I don't wanna build something that isn't going to last. I don't wanna build something out of wood. I don't wanna, I don't wanna skimp on something because there's some kind of make-believe perception of a number of what might pass at the ballot. And I, I just don't, I'm not comfortable. I just see, so, all I see is skimping and I, and then you show the proposed number here where the new building is 2, 2,023,000 and the option three is 1.6, but the difference between the total, uh, project cost is minuscule. At the bo, bottom line, at the end of the day, 3.3 million or 3.2, option three at the bottom, you have 3.178. Where, I'm, I'm just a little perplexed on the overall, I don't want a project to be, I was on the building committee originally and, and so we all know the effort being put into it, but I just feel like if everything was, if all this whole meeting in the last several months was all about getting under a certain number and not really what this town needs, I'm upset at that.
Eileen?
That would, um, that, that would fairly easily be, uh, modified if you were to change, because the, the driving, uh, the, the balancing part is the existing building renovation. So if you wanted option one and you wanted to do the, um, existing renovations properly, you would, um, change that number of 176,000 dollars or $20 a square foot to $50 a square foot and 400,000 dollars. And there's also some changes in the soft costs that, that occur. Um, and the same thing for option two. It should be, um, it should be $50 a square foot, which would make that 440 again, um, adding to the bottom line.
I think, Dan, though, you're wondering where the, why are they restrained?
Yeah, it's like 3 million came, came out of where? Was it, you know?
I think, and this is my guess, but I, I, I believe it has to do with trying to work within the confines of staying within, and tell me if I'm wrong, whatever bond we go for, whether it be 20 or 30 year, that discussion will come, that the payments would be similar to the bond that we're retiring so that it wouldn't be an increase in the tax rate as a result. It would just be constant.
Then if that's the philosophy, then I think, I think we started off on the wrong foot. I do, I have to say it out loud. I, I, you know, as someone who's built things, you know, you, there's just a different philosophy at stake here. And I feel all of us, I haven't heard anybody for the last several years ever say that we wanted to gut the whole site or, or, or destroy the existing building and let's build, you know, the 8 million facility or the 10 million, you, you, you go on and on. I think we all had some common ground saying, no, that the existing building would be very good for something. And so that was, that's a common ground. So whatever it would cost to renovate that correctly, then X is the price. And I don't think anybody ever quammed about that. A debate would be more, no, four to three, we want it torn down. Or four to three, no, we wanna save it. Well, then if we save it, then you do the right thing and you save it the way it should be. Then you bring in the new building.
Yeah.
And I just, I feel, and you did a great presentation, you're still, and I know it's not over, but I, I hear you, I har, I just heard you too much, Kyle, saying the budget, the budget, the budget. And I don't feel, that's not where I would've come from. We...
Eileen is dying to say something, Dan.
Um, that's not Kyle's fault. It's actually mine. Um, and because I wanted to keep it within a certain amount of money, it's a number that, uh, the public has seen before. And as I said, it's very easy to make all three options, um, up to what they need to be by changing the existing building renovation number to 440. And Paul's gonna tell you what the project costs with proper renovation of the existing building would be. Um, and I just would like to say that, um, there is, you might have a wood building there and you might be opposed to a wood building. We wanted to give you options, but all three options are not cheap options. They're not on the cheap. The only part that is, um, is not really sufficient is the existing building renovation.
And before Paul goes, if I might, you took the heat for Kyle, but really, we all kind of own that over the past half dozen years.
We never said anything not to.
We, we, everybody, department managers, all of us, everybody is focused on, on, on the bottom line. And so that's the reason Eileen, I suspect, went up and did that conversation with Kyle and we got to where we are right this minute. But, um, but anyhow.
Tom wanted to say something.
Yeah, I got another question, another issue, okay? With the cubic feet of these buildings, what are we gonna do to, how much is it gonna cost us additionally to heat it? Okay? You're looking at these buildings and you're looking at higher ceilings, more open areas above the work areas and those sort of stuff. And so what are we talking about in terms of what it's gonna cost us to operate the buildings? Cause that's not calculated in here. We're looking at a cost to construct. We're not looking at the cost of what it's gonna cost us on an annual basis to heat, to heat the building and cool the area, you know, the office areas, you know?
We don't have, we don't have actual figures on that, but it will be more because you're gonna have to follow current, um, mechanical codes and everything. So that's where a lot of your energy use is gonna come from. Cause you're gonna have a lot more, um, air ventilation coming in to keep everything, uh, up to code and, um, you're gonna have a bigger volume of space. You will get some efficiencies from electrical via, um, you know, lighting and everything's a lot more efficient over the last five years and everything, but the mechanical costs will go up all, more in comparison to what you have now.
Well, I expected that, but I mean...
And one of the things we're looking at, Tom, um, through working with Turner, they recently completed a project for the DOT in, in Derry and they did kind of a similar building to option two. And the heat for that is radiant heating in the concrete slab, which is certainly more efficient than, than the, trying to heat the whole space through, through hot air. Um, so certainly we would look to, to do the most efficient kind of system, but unquestionably, if we're going from one building to two, the, the annual costs are, are going to go up.
But just thinking, we're losing, cause the insulation we got, I mean, part of that, heat losses from that too.
So, you know, but I'm, I'm looking at the three new buildings and I'm looking at a different cubic footprint on those. And I'm saying to myself, wait a minute, you know, yeah, you got all this headroom, but some of that, you know, it's like walking into the atrium at, at St. Joe's Hospital. You got two floors of ceiling. What the heck's that for?
Aesthetic.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So, and I know we're not talking about aesthetics here, but the fact of the matter is, you know, this is a bigger footprint between both buildings, okay? That's okay. But we haven't gotten anything to take a look at. What's the impact gonna be on the operating cost for this?
I wonder with the renovations in the present building, I bet the operating cost would be less than what it is now, just because of the insulation and the use of electricity. I mean, you're not gonna use it for maintenance. It's literally storage. So I, I would suspect that the present one's gonna be less, but I totally agree with the new one, obviously, it's more space.
And if I could speak to Dan's point real quick, um, the, we, we just went through the pros and cons of each of the three options and we're gonna make our recommendation to you folks very quickly here in this presentation. But I do wanna let you know that I worked at the garage for five years. I know what the needs of the building are. Lori works there now. Um, we wouldn't present something to you that we didn't think met our needs both now and long-term in the future and wasn't a durable project. Everything we do as a department, being the, the folks who do the main, the maintenance, everything we do, we look for long-term, low-maintenance solutions and we believe any three of these options meet that goal. So I, I...
So the word option, I usually, I wanted to see a drastic change. It's almost like we talk about the default budget. You know, you don't want it to be 200 grand different from the other, from the regular budget. And so that's, it's something that I, I wanted to see a more, a real option to me would be something, option one is different from option three by a million dollars, you know?
And that's exactly what it is, Dan. The apples-to-apples comparison between option one and three with the same rehab cost is a million dollars difference. Option one becomes 4.3 million dollars if we do the full renovation of the garage, of the existing facility.
Where are you gonna add that up?
Yeah. Can I, can I go? Please? Please? Please?
Yeah, I'm doing numbers too and I'm thinking, nah, I'm gonna let him take care of this.
If you take what's on the slide right now, 3,276,000 for option one, you add the, to make, you take out the 176, that's budgeted for the existing rental and add 440 in there, the new cost for option one comes in at 3,540,000 dollars. Option two?
The soft costs, they are saved?
Soft costs.
No, the soft costs would go up as well.
One saying yes and one saying no.
I'm sorry, the costs do go up for soft costs. And here's for...
By how much?
I'm sorry. Um, we haven't, we haven't done any of that. We're, Paul's just doing it on the fly right now. So, um, there's percentages, um, that relate to architectural and engineering and that kinda thing, but we can work them up for you and we can have it, um, ready for any other presentations that are gonna...
Well, if it's 15%, you take 15% of 264 and add that in and that gives you your additional soft costs, if that's what you're talking about. That's one way to look at it. I'm not saying it's perfect, okay?
So it'll be 3,588,000 dollars.
A quick and, a quick and dirty.
Quick and dirty was about 3.6 million dollars.
Yeah.
Quick and dirty on option two is about 3,430,000, 300, 3, 3,450,000 dollars. And then, of course, option three would still stay at 3,178,000.
It seems like 3.6 for that would cover your additional soft costs.
Yeah. And I'm, and I'm just, I'm just going on my, you know, figuring that's, that, that typical, uh, uh, engineering, uh, cost and whatnot is usually 15% of the project is to cover that kinda stuff. It varies a lot, I know. It can go anywhere from eight to, eight to 15, uh, depending, but when you look at, you know, you look at the, at the, at the, at just, like I said, it's a quick and dirty, a rule of thumb, whatever you wanna call it.
Right. But what, what we're looking at is the difference in, doing the renovation. What we're looking at is doing the, the differences, the renovation cost, and that's a little simpler than, than the new building.
Yeah, okay. So that would be, it could be slightly less.
Eileen?
Could I ask Paul to, um, repeat those numbers for options one and two, please?
So option one would be around 3.6 million dollars. Option two would be about 3,450,000 dollars. Maybe 3.5 million. Pushing the limits.
Pushing the limits of, pushing the limits of what? Because in a, on a 30-year bond, what, the difference between 3.6 and 3.4 is not, is not worthy in, in my eyes.
The, the 3.5 million dollars is off the fly on the soft cost, adding the soft cost in there. So doing quick math, it says around 3, 3,450,000, at most it would be 3.5 million dollars is what I'm saying for option two. Option, option one is around 3.6 million dollars, give or take. So that's where I'm giving you the comparison of rehabbing the facility to 440,000 dollars. And not having the formula is because my computer's sitting in front of Kyle to run all these things for you and that's the best I can do.
Which is close enough. And you're agreeing, 3.6, 3, 4, 5, I mean, it's small change. In the grand scheme of a 30-year building or a 50-year building or something like that. And, and you can clean those up, but you were starting to say 4-point something million. Are you disagreeing with these numbers?
No, the, the reason I threw that number out is the, as, as we worked through this process, um, we, we tried to focus to Dan's point largely, we, we came at it working with Turner from a needs standpoint. And as we plugged through the, the data that we got from the committee and kinda looked at it in a floor plan, you know, really trying to put it together, what the committee had come up with from the previous architect was just a bunch of eight and a half by 11 cut sheets of rooms. As we started to put it together as a floor plan and look at what it was, the original option that they proposed to us was a 4.3 million dollar project and that's where that came from. When we discussed internally about, was that a number that we could show to you guys or not, we kinda refined option one down a little bit and then option two and three came down from there. So that, that's where the 4.3 number came.
And I appreciate that, that I know you're right. I know you're 100% right. This is 100% need. Uh, you know, you, I don't see any wants in here at all that, that you've, you've done a very, uh, conservative, uh, job on it and, and I appreciate that. I guess I feel like it just, there's so mu, uh, so many other things lacking in the overall thing. I feel like it's like they had the 11th hour and I know we have a calendar, uh, that we're up against and we're supposed to make a, an informed decision by, um, what's the date to have it on the ballot? We need to have a March, March 14th?
No, February.
February 14th. February 14th. And it just, it's so close. It's just so close, the date. And I, I, sorry.
You made your point, that's your point. I don't totally disagree with you. I guess I'm caught. What is a number that the council feels comfortable pushing for a bond? I guess that's what it comes down to and...
And if, if I might, Nancy, if we get through the rest of the presentation, Paul will have a chance to kind of show how the funding fits and where those numbers come in. And maybe the discussion would be better off after that.
Good point, good point.
What was the previous cost that went before the town?
It was 3.3 million.
Oh, it was, yes. It seemed to me that, I'm worried because it is in the residential neighborhood, and I hear that you're worried too. And if, if we decided on a steel building or recommended a steel building, could it be, could it be made to be more presentable for the residential neighborhood?
It, it certainly can be. And when we get further along in the presentation, I'm going to make that pitch for the existing building. When we renovate the existing building, instead of putting the same steel sheeting that's on there now, we're proposing to timber frame in between the steel girders and, and columns so that we can put a more residential look onto it.
And, and there'd be a lot of landscaping, screening for the new building to it?
Yeah, and we'll get to the site plan that'll talk about that a little bit. Okay, thanks.
You're afraid to say that now, aren't you?
The cat's kind of out of the bag, but, so the, the option three is the one that, that we're promoting as, as the proper option for this project for a variety of reasons. Are there things about options one and two that we like? There certainly are. But factoring everything in, we feel comfortable certainly that option three meets our needs. And, and although very conservative, as you said, Dan, it, it does meet our needs and brings us light years ahead of where we are today. And to Jackie's point, and, and we do care a, a lot about the aesthetics of it. It, it is a residential neighborhood. We think the garage is in a great location. It's almost at the center geographically of the town, so you couldn't ask for a better place. And certainly the garage is one of the early buildings there as compared to all the other neighborhoods that grew up around it. But even that being the case, we, we'd like to be a responsible neighbor and, and give an attractive-looking facility. Especially when you factor, we're going to have two buildings there now, the new one bigger than the old. And it, having just the, the steel buildings, I think, would be, you know, quite an albatross to the area.
Yeah, but how does that compare with all those cobbled-together things you got in the back?
It's all screened off. Beautiful screening and shrubbery. But, yeah, point taken, Tom.
Yeah.
Dan? So you're picking option three, and so where in your mind, if the, versus option one, the new building, 2,230,000. In option three, the new building would be 1.6. That 300,000 dollar, what, what gets lost between one and, and three?
Between one and three, the biggest loss is space. We're losing about 1,000 square feet.
And it's 300 grand to lose that much.
And, and the biggest area of that space is, I mentioned before, that our current bay length is 68 feet. The proposal of option two and three is 75 feet. Option three had bay lengths of 80 feet. And that's really the, the biggest part of that difference. I'm, I'm sorry, option one, thank you. Sorry about that. I'm thinking before speaking.
So it, it's an issue I take with my colleagues here, is that's what I would say to, to you, that on the life of a 30-year bond, what, what does the 300 grand extra cost where today for 25, 26,000 people, will we have 30,000 in, you know, 10 years, five years? Are we being short-sighted and not going for that bigger bang for the buck? When it's taken, taken us 44 years to build the last highway garage, I would make, I would like to know that we're building this one, and maybe that one won't have to be done for another 40 years. That, that's all. I just feel like that number is, it's just so tight. What are, what are we giving up and at what cost?
I got a question for our consultant. And this is really interesting. Is there any rumblings in your industry about the likely impacts of what's being proposed in terms of the infrastructure improvements that are being proposed by the current administration? Because I remember in the 70s, when this happened, the last time, there was a huge infrastructure building piece in '76 and '77 and '78. The price of building materials went through the roof because there were shortages. We weren't producing, couldn't get steel, couldn't get plywood, and all that other stuff. So I don't know if there's any rumblings out there about how are these, how are these other industries that provide you with your materials, how's that going to be impacted by all that?
We're not hearing anything yet on that. It's just too new. Just as, just to give you an idea, we were working on two bond votes last year for two schools. And they're going again, the, schools. They're going again this year for bond, for bond vote. And in that one time period, you know, they're losing, they're paying an additional million dollars on the project budget. One, because they missed on the bond cost, right? They were probably at 2.4 last year, and now they're at 3.6 or something like that. And then also, construction material costs went up on certain materials about 8%. So that, you know, unfortunately, the way things are right now, with the economy getting better, each year you wait, you, you incur more additional costs to gain the same thing. So it's just, it's, it's the time period we're in.
So just another factor to consider is the fact that they're seeing 8% in, in one year. And we're going to be, what, if we go now, we get the bonding in when, August, or would it go in June?
Bonding would probably go in December because we want to be constructing until the spring of the following year. Because we still have 70% of design in HVAC, and so it would be December of...
17, this year?
Maybe July of 18.
And the first payment would be six months later.
Because they're also talking about three or four increases by the Fed in the next calendar year.
That's correct.
Okay. So that's going to add basis points to, to interest rates.
Okay, why don't we finish this and then we can, because I know part of the bonding is part of this presentation. So go ahead, let's finish this up.
Okay, thanks, Nancy. So this is option three, floor plan layout. I've showed you each of these bit by bit. Here's what the total package looks like. So again, just to refresh, these green areas in the front are the foreman offices, the administrative offices, and the conference room. The training room and kitchen area is back here. The mechanical is in this corner. The locker rooms and bathrooms right here in the middle. And then the whole right-hand side of the building is the maintenance shops and, and garage bays. Nice things about this layout, there's a definite separation between the work areas and the administrative areas. It's a very efficient floor plan. There's very little hallway space, as you can see. So this would be the public entrance to the building. They'd come into this vestibule. Staff entrance would be back here. And so the, the crew members, you know, they come in, they work in the training room, they go to the locker rooms, and they can go to the garage bays. So really, this, this back part of the building is where the, you know, if you want to call it the dirty part of the building, where they're walking with their muddy boots and stuff, and which keeps this front part, it's more of a clean area. There is an access door at both hallways to the garage bays. But it's a really efficient layout. There's very little hallway space. And again, leading to a, a conservative cost of the project because of the good layout. Looking at the proposed site plan, we had Turner kind of look at this with fresh eyes. And they came to the same conclusion the committee did, that really the optimal place for the new building is in the backyard of our current facility. So this is the existing building here. This is the salt shed. And to your point earlier, Jackie, so when, when we have to fill the vehicles with salt, they're currently parked in the backyard here. They drive over to the salt shed, and the loader loads them right there at the salt shed. This would give us a nice flow from the bays, front to back of the new structure, to, if we, if we utilize the single doors on each end of the building, that way, it, it's a really nice layout. And right now, that, that's kind of the way we're leaning. We'd have a new entrance from Turkey Hill Road that doesn't exist today to get to the new building. We would maintain this entrance because, of course, the fuel island is here, and all of our fleet vehicles, townwide, fuel their vehicles there. Currently, we store all of our drainage pipe and, and plows and everything else out in this backyard. So we'll have to do some site work to relocate those to other parts of, of our backyard. Way in the backyard, of course, is the Gibson fields and the, and Martel field, by way of reference for people. So that's kind of the, the site plan in a nutshell.
What's?
Old salt shed.
Existing shed.
What did you say it said, Nancy?
I said existing something.
But not shed.
No, I didn't say shed.
I did, though.
Yeah, but you didn't say existing.
I did, too.
That, that's our old salt shed.
All right, she won. Okay, I admit it.
Are there prizes to give out?
Well, we had, it was so, it was just a scene.
There's enough of a buffer between Martel field to move all the...
There is.
Yeah, there's enough room where you'd have all the room you'd want to put your, your plows and all your other drainage pipes and all that.
Right. Overall, our, our facility sits on two parcels, actually. And the combination of the parcels is about 27 acres. So we have, we have room to, to move. And, and still be mindful of the neighborhood over here. This is the David Park subdivision, back here, which is Cota Road and, and all of those. They have green space right here that was built into the subdivision, so those trees can never come down. In addition, we're proposing to leave a 30-foot buffer to the parking lot, and then the building's even further away from that. So again, we're trying to be mindful of, of our neighbors and where we're at.
Are the trees full-grown? I mean...
They are.
They hide, they really camouflage the houses and stuff?
They do, yeah.
Because we can always augment if we need to.
Kyle, your staff parking is in the, in the back of the building there, or what? When you have 27 or 28 people working trucks and stuff, they're parked somewhere, right?
Right. Yeah, the staff parking would be here and here, you know, close proximity to the, the staff entrance door, which is right there. And then having this facility set up the way it is, we'd get as many building vehicles stored in here as we can. In addition to, like during winter storms, we would store more vehicles in here. But the overflow vehicles would be stored most likely out in this area.
And would it ever make sense to build sheds or something like that, to be able to keep those out of the weather?
We could certainly look into that, lean to kind of things.
Lean to sheds or something, yeah.
And we'd probably have to do some of that, because what this building would displace, we have some, it's actually our old spreader racks. We now have spreader racks on the new salt shed that was built in 2005. So we converted our old spreader rack into cold storage out there, and we'll be losing that. So we'll have to do some sort of, of a structure. And typically, we, like, like Highway does, we'll find materials and, and make something work. The old spreader rack was a, was a pole barn that we got some cement blocks and made a foundation to, to wall three sides in.
Telephone block, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Jackie? Oh, just one more question about the, the existing building. There wouldn't be any work being done there. That, it's strictly for storage? Going to be strictly for storage?
Storage, and, and we'd be washing our vehicles there.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah. This is a quick recap of the budget. We'd be seeking a 3.3 million dollar bond at the annual meeting. And why it's 3.3 instead of 3.2 is that cost uncertainty from the time presumably the project gets approved in April to the time the bonds are accepted and construction actually starts. There's a lot of uncertainty because, as I mentioned before, we're only 30% along in the design process here. There's still a lot of design details to figure out in the next step. I'll turn it over to Paul now to talk about the, the funding portion of the project.
So the general fund has two bonds left. And I, I did debt outstanding because it's important to see what the Town of Merrimack has for debt. And June, these are all at the end of the fiscal year. So in 2017, 18, we have $390,000 worth of principal and $36,000, almost $37,000 worth of interest. That includes our last payment for Greens Pond, is in that fiscal year, 17, 18. So as you look at the next slide and look at the debt runout, you'll see the first bond is Greens Bond, Greens Pond Land Acquisition Bond. It was a 15-year bond. We'll be making our last payment August 15, 2017, for $270,000. I'd like everybody to keep in mind, once again, that magical number of $270,000. And then we have another bond for drainage that goes until 2023. And that is for our drainage bond, which also was a 15-year bond, and that goes to 2023. And those are the only two bonds in the general fund the Town of Merrimack has outstanding. So we have very, very little debt. On a 20-year bond, the first year would be, the first payment would be due in 2019 because we would probably bond this later on. We wouldn't bond it right away in July of, July of 17. We'd probably bond it closer to January of 18, January 18. So the first payment wouldn't be due until August 2019. And the total for principal and interest on that 3.3 million dollar bond is $269,569, which is just shy of that $270,000. If you look at the same project and do a 30-year bond, the first year payment would be $231,688. And that would be the largest payment in both cases, is the first year, 2019. Looking at it, we have Greens Pond, 2017, 18. It equates to about 8 cents on the tax rate. In 2018, 19, that Greens Pond will fall off, which would be a savings of 8 cents. And this is where we supplant either the 20-year bond or the 30-year bond. And it supplants that $270,000 with that 8 cents on the tax rate. And 30-year bond is about seven years, 7 cents on the tax rate. However, if you go with a 30-year bond, there's an additional $784,000 worth of interest that the town would pay over that, over the 30 years. We utilized the 3.3 million dollars because of, of the uncertainty in the construction cost. We were looking at a 5%, but it seems like we were just told it's 8% tonight. But we're looking maybe at a 5% increase in, in construction cost. So that's why we're looking at about 3.3 million dollar bond.
I think he, he said that some of the, some of the costs increased by 8%, but not the whole thing. So I don't, I can't, don't want to speak for you.
Right, some of the materials.
Some of the materials, so...
I don't know.
But, you know, that, that's why we're coming in, because of some of the uncertainty. We're only at a, a 30% draw design phase right now. So...
The next steps on the project would be, hopefully, the town council could approve a concept tonight. That's kind of what we were hoping for coming into this. And then approve the, the concept of putting the article on the warrant for this year. Should that happen, we would then go into a community outreach phase. We, we'll meet with any local groups who want to, and certainly if you guys know any folks who want us to come talk to you. And certainly if you guys know any folks who want us to come talk to them, we'll give the same presentation to anyone and everyone we can. That's, I think, our biggest ally in getting this to pass is educating folks on what the project is. We'd also propose to host a couple of open houses prior to the deliberative session. We'd be tentatively looking at doing Saturday, February 11th, and then Monday, February 13th. Try and get a different, a weekend day and a weeknight day to try and get as many people as we can to come and see the garage. We'll open up the garage, escort them around, show, show everyone what it is that they're voting on. And then, of course, the, we presume to do a presentation again at the deliberative session on March 15th.
Paul? And that second bullet point that Kyle's talking about, the town council approval warrant article, that just means that the town council is in favor of putting one of these options on a warrant article. And if the dollar amount changes from the $3.3 million, I can run bond amortization schedules and have that for you on Monday night so you can make a final determination if that's so chooses by the council.
Okay. Anything else you want to add before we start?
Or you open up the floor.
The next slide was questions.
Okay. Eileen?
Can you go back to the last one?
This one?
Yeah, I think it's the first item that we would like you to do tonight is to approve a concept. And then on Monday night would be part two. Is that correct?
We could, yes. If they give me a. Yes, that would work, but if they can, if they, if they want something other than a $3.3 million amortization schedule, I can have that ready for them on Monday.
And when would they vote on it?
They would just, like everything else, that would be the first step. On the 16th of February, we'll have a public hearing for this. And at that time, they would vote to move it forward to the warrant for the deliberative session. So February 16th would be the vote and the warrant.
Phil?
Thank you. And thanks, Kyle, and Laura. This good presentation. I just stuck a Tic Tac in my mouth, sorry about that. I'm big into the aesthetics because of its location. I think it's very important. And I think that's why, one of the bigger reasons three jumped out for everybody. The more, the bit of added space, 1,000 square feet, I think Kyle said, that I think that's a sacrifice that I probably would accept for.
Aesthetics?
For the aesthetics. I just, one quick question. Where the vehicles will come out of the current building, the renovated current building, to Turkey Hill Road? There's enough for the swing for the bigger vehicles to come out of there?
There is.
Okay. I figured you must have already known that, but I had to ask. And then the only other thing is I'd like, when Paul is finally crunching numbers, I know at the brewery in the refrigerator, they have a freezer room there. They have doors. It's a garage door that you go in and out of, but they have fast closing and opening doors that were more of a material. And I didn't know, we probably want something solid so it can be secure as well, but I didn't know if those could be casted into all these garage doors that we'll have so that when the button's pressed, it closes in about a two seconds, I'd say. And so it's quite, you know, I don't, it might not even be worth it. They might be outrageously expensive. But it would, I think it would help in our heating costs for that type of building when you're going in and out and so on, but.
Yeah, without a doubt. That's interesting. We'll definitely look into that.
Just a quick, quick for Phil. It's just for Phil.
They have those at even at the auto dealers, like the bigger auto dealers during the winters. You'll see them as you're parking up, they beep the horn and they fly up and they'll fly right down. So that, they're there. Not, it wasn't just Budweiser, but it comes to mind, different auto dealers have the same thing.
Yeah. It's, and it's, it's good, but not necessarily secure because I think they are cam vinyl type material. I don't know.
Like a breakaway.
Does he, you know what he's talking about?
Yeah, they're fabric zip doors. You usually use them in factories where you're trying to isolate different air temperatures.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, and so it might not work in this instance, but if it's something that could be used in conjunction with a solid door as well, which won't close as fast, of course, but it's just my thoughts. But, but I don't want to scrimp. So if you guys are comfortable, because I can appreciate Dan, my one bad vote back in the 90s at some point was that central fire station. I'm still annoyed at myself for that. But it's too late. It's not coming down and, you know, life goes on. But, so I want to make sure that it's done nicely, quality. You know, we don't have to have brick and marble, I suppose, but, but I'd like it to be done right and it will work for you guys for a while, so.
And again, to that point, I think you guys know that I'm fairly candid. And I truly, yeah, I truly believe that even though option three is less expensive, it meets our needs and it's a good long-term solution for the town. And it, it won't be a maintenance burden on us over options two and one. So I am comfortable with it. One thing I will point out, even though it is a timber structure, you can kind of see it in the back here, the, the concrete work, the concrete walls on the timber building will be up above bumper height. So it's, even though it's a timber building, the concrete is still going to be protecting from any accidental bumps from vehicles or anything.
But one last comment, I love cement siding as opposed to vinyl.
I do too.
Okay. Cement side, it looks like real clapboard, but it's a cement board.
It used to be known as hardy plank.
Yeah, I believe, yeah.
Is it like a cement?
Cementatious.
Hardy's a brand name.
Yeah, it's a brand name, but it's, it's that.
Cement fiber.
Right.
And it, and it looks like actual, you know, clapboard, but it's not.
It's a much nicer look than the vinyl.
Yep.
The question I had, now, we had moved up the 3.1 to 3.3 to accommodate for changes. Would we have to change the 3.6 to 3.9? Or does that include the, do you know what I'm talking about?
What option are you talking about?
Option one.
Okay.
If we, the figure that we received was 3.6 million. That's with the accommodation for the rehab and some soft. But I noticed when we talked about option three, we really did the numbers to 3.3 million, not 3.1, to accommodate changes. So would we have to change the 3.6 to 3.8 to accommodate changes when we're talking about bonding? You know what I'm talking about? I'm not saying it right.
Okay.
Increase cost for materials.
So is that accurate, though? It really would be like 3.8?
If you picked option one.
Right.
You'd be a little bit of insurance.
Bonding for 300, 3.8.
You should.
Right. If we're going to do it for the 3.1.
Right.
Then we should do it for the 3.6. Yeah.
I just, I'm not sure, Paul can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that you can issue a bond for less if it's approved by the public. So let's say the public approved for 3.8 million. When we get to the point where, 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 I'm not sure what percentage of, well, actually it would probably have to get to the bidding stages before we would know the actual cost. So you could, you could bond less than what the voters approved if.
After your bids come in.
Oh, yeah, as long as they match up. They would approve the match.
Right.
Right. But I mean, that would make a difference. I mean, depending upon what decisions we make, would we look at 3.3 versus 3.8?
Right.
In reality. Yes, Dan, you're right.
Yes. Kyle, I assume that there was a reason carrying loads or something, whereas the, the smaller one was timber. It can't be expanded then. There was, it was the size limit because it was timber.
75 feet versus 80 feet?
Is that it?
Yeah.
And it's limited?
We can speak to that a little better than that could.
75 feet is pushing the limits for wood trusses.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make a little comment. I'm really pleasantly surprised at the cost of renovating the existing building. I'm really quite surprised, pleasantly surprised.
Dan?
I can, I'll make this my, kind of my closing statement. I felt like I ganged up on everybody, but.
We can take it, Dan.
I want to go back to when the vote, I want to stress how I'm very proud of my town, very proud of my town. And I want to stress and remind ourselves that the majority of citizens and voters in town said yes when we came to the table and asked them to build this highway garage. The technicality of the two-thirds majority, as the way the law is written, so it lost. But, so that being said, I feel the same way now as I felt then. Not for a minute did I think the townspeople, not enough, said yes because of the cost. I don't think that 3-point whatever scared people or made them, whenever it didn't mark on the thing, my own personal opinion is, we didn't get no votes because they saw 3.0 million. You know, I just, that's not where I, where I was coming from. I thought we did as, as good as a job as we could as to promote it. And I'll always feel good that the majority of citizens said yes. And ever since that loss, we've always said, this is a really tough nut to crack to get that supermajority. And if we could try, we tried every year. It wouldn't bother me because it is such a difficult thing to achieve. But I don't think at any moment that I heard complaints about, oh, that's outrageous, that that price, that we lost votes because of the cost. So that was part of the angle I felt what tonight was. I didn't want to be so constrained on a number because I think we're all constrained by nature already, just the way we all are in this town. So I, again, you just, great job and all, all the employees at the highway garage for what you've been putting up with that place all these years. It's just, I feel bad that it's taken so long to get something done because I've said it many times and I'll say it again, it's deplorable conditions. And I feel that we should be doing something better for, for our highway department and people who work there. Thanks for all the hard work that you did tonight and everything that led up to it, Kyle and everybody.
Thank you, Dan.
Anything else?
Yeah. John?
So I've been trying to bite my tongue through a lot of this, but I have to agree with Dan in, in much of what he said tonight. I don't want us to scamp. I don't want us to go for the cheapest one because we think it fits under the $270,000 a year number. As I think even Steve said in his letter, we want to make the right choice and make the right building. A lot of the people, I think, to what Dan was suggesting, were concerned that we were going to be bonded too heavily or overlapping bonds and things like that. And we're, we're coming back at it this year because, partially because the one bond is rolling off the end and it leaves us with an opening. And I, so I really don't think we need to be too anxious about the $270,000 or, or any of that kind of stuff. Trying to look at the pictures you presented here, I don't understand the differences and the nuances, you know, for the 100,000 square feet. If option one had longer bays, why is the office space so much larger and stuff? Seems kind of odd. And curious whether or not you can do other things to the aesthetics to put an arched roof or a trussed roof over the office bays or something as opposed to a flat metal roof to make it a little less industrial looking and, you know, various different options. And I'm, I'm sure that somebody that's trying to be clever could come up with some good ideas. And so I'm all for approving the concept of going forward. And I have no problem with the numbers that we're talking about. I think the town's ready to accept that for a highway building that we are desperately in need of. And we're just encouraged that we, we don't try to make it so cheap that we find ourselves in 20 years out of, out of space or out of whatever. And I, for me, I mean, timber just doesn't sound as durable. And so I'm just concerned about that piece of it. Are we really getting a good, solid, functional, mechanical building that's going to last much more than the length of the bond? We want it to go 50 years or more easily. And I don't want things to be deteriorating or problems that we're putting major work into 20 years from now, if we can avoid that. But I really appreciate the work you've done here. The direction you're going, I think, is great. And I think being on that area and working around what we have to do with storage of other equipment and stuff like that, moving it back further or something like that is functional. And I think your screening and whatnot and the fact that that building's been there looking like an industrial building forever, it kind of mitigates a little bit of the problem with neighborhoods. They're used to it. We can continue to screen. We can continue to improve the siding and the, and the outlook of the building as best we can. So I think we have a lot of positive things to go forward with and appreciate the work that's been done.
Having it one color would help.
Certainly.
Eileen?
I'd like somebody to, to answer the question as to the longevity of both.
Steel versus timber?
I guess we've talked about this before. And I guess my, what I would say is any building properly maintained will last a long time. I guess if you look at the building you have, you know, do you think it's done well?
Technically, technically.
The steel shaft is good.
Yeah, the steel frames. Still good and it's still usable. Right. It's, like I said, anything that's properly maintained will last.
The house is 200 years old.
The problem you run into with public buildings, this is just my own observation, the problem with public buildings is nobody owns them. It's not like, it's not like a, a shopping center where there's somebody that owns that that's taking care of it. It's a public building and nobody owns it, so nobody wants to take care of it sometimes. So that's what you run into.
And just one thing I would add if I could real quick, Tom. Even though it's timber construction, it's not residential timber construction. Speaking with, with Bill from Turner Group, instead of two-by-four, two-by-six exterior construction, because the walls are tall and because of its purpose, it would all be two-by-eight construction. So certainly a lot more durable than, than normal residential construction. So I just wanted to get that in there as well.
So I just wanted to ask you a quick question. You said properly maintained. Is there a difference in the cost of proper maintenance of a, of a large metal building versus a large timber?
We're going to design them so they probably remain maintained the same way.
Okay.
The, the reason for the difference in the designs is in option two, it may look a little odd, but that's a totally pre-engineered building where the efficiency of a pre-engineered building is that you're able to create a frame where you don't have to, where you can not have a lot of structure to support the siding and the roofing. So that's, that's the efficiency of that building. That's what you have now. With, with the wood frame, it's, it's less cost because the materials are less and you can find more contractors that are able to build the wood frame. But it's more framing members because you have to support the siding and the, and the wall surfaces and things like that. When you build a pre-engineered building, the exterior wall, which would be an insulated metal panel in, in this case, is able to span that distance for four feet. Those are those horizontal lines you'll see in those types of buildings. And the frame, and the building will go up faster. And, and they're probably equal in energy efficiency, so.
Before you go away. Before you go away, can I ask, if, if we wanted to do the cement plank or something like that on the siding of this industrial building, would it just require filling in the gaps between the metal?
Right. Then you're, you're adding stud framing and in between the horizontal, they're called girts, they span between the vents. We've got framing in there and then we have to add sheeting and add siding on that. And then you'd probably add an interior wall surface as well to protect the framing.
Would, but just a guess, is that two-by-eight or is that only two-by-four or something like?
Because you already have your steel frame there with the girts, it's probably three-and-five inch metal studs or something like that. Because it's not spanning very far, it's only going this far.
Right. So that would add some amount, but, but it'd be a wild guess right now as to how much.
Right. I mean, it's, that's built, that's what's built into the budget on option three for the renovation of the existing.
And we can certainly get that number for you for Monday if you'd like it.
Yeah, because I would like to see us try to avoid having the metal sheeting sides if we can without costing a fortune to do that.
Okay, we'll get that number for Monday.
Even though it's a squared off roof and stuff like that, we could at least make the sides look a little better.
Right.
Well, if I could just add, there are other, other things you can do to metal siding to make them look more residential. One is change the color. You can go to a red.
One color.
You can go to a red or a dark green or something like that where it disappears. And you can also change the corrugation so it looks more like a barn instead of, instead of just a metal building. And that's something, we actually just received an award from the local architectural society for the design of Holderness Ice Creek. And that's something you did there.
We'd like to see a picture of that, please.
You can go right online.
That lime green. Lime green doesn't work.
What town is it?
Holderness. Holderness.
It's Holderness School.
Oh, Holderness School. Oh, okay.
Big bucks.
It's a prep school.
Actually, it wasn't that expensive because it was an emergency project.
Yeah.
Their existing frame was failing because of the snow load was, when it came in. So they didn't even have funding for it in place when, when we did it. And I think the whole project was four million and that's what the ice rink and the refrigeration equipment.
Yes, Alan.
We would like to have, uh, copy the picture rather than going online and looking at it, please.
Oh, Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have the benefit of what we put on the ballot back in 2014. So are there any differences in this proposed project that are different from what was proposed back in 2014? If so, what are they?
It's, I guess not having been on the committee, I can't speak clearly to this. Um, in general, the project's very similar. Um, the big difference from 2014 to the, what we presented tonight is, uh, back then, the committee, it really looked at space needs. And what came out of the space needs were, um, a bunch of eight-and-a-half-by-eleven cut sheets of different spaces. Um, so there was a, a sheet of paper that said, "Training room." There was a sheet of paper that said, "Locker rooms." Um, none of it was stitched together. Um, so what we couldn't show the public was a floor plan, like, like you see behind us here. Um, so the real push for, for this was to get from that study stage to a 30% design concept with floor plans and elevations of what a building actually would look like that, that meets our needs.
Can I add something? So, option one, we, we had that program that was developed previously. Option one, in the office, everything, um, on the side of the bays is an exact replication of the space needs that they asked for. And then option two is trying to find efficiencies to reduce the square footage. So we were able to do that by, um, just rearranging things a little bit and turning things. And then that became one metal building going across the whole thing to try to get more construction efficiency as opposed to doing two different types of steel structures.
Paul?
And, uh, Council Boyd, uh, sitting on that committee with Council Dwyer, Council Yakovoff and Eileen, the one thing that we did not include for whatever point was the two, the maintenance bay and the two blue bays right here. So those are an addition here. So they might have changed some of the footprint there, but they also garnered those savings by bringing in what they, what, what we need is the highway maintenance bay and the, the picnic bays, you know, for picnic tables and construction. So they, they garnered efficiencies in the administrative area, but they also looked at that extra, the fifth bay door or the first bay door.
Tom?
One of the things that I thought came across negatively to people last time was that the architectural rendering of the building looked like a, a business park, not like a, a Public Works Department. These pictures thankfully look more like they go in the area for a Public Works Department and don't have the elaborate, you know, vertical concrete edges and vertical windows and all that kind of stuff that appeared in that one. And I think a lot of folks were turned off by that, thinking it was too much, too exciting, too nice, um, to be parking your plow trucks and, and welding your, your, uh, plow blades and stuff like that. And, um, so I'm hoping that some of that efficiency and that improvement. And it's a little bit stark, you know, and it's going into an industrial area. I understand that, but it's a Public Works Department building. It's not, um, an industrial complex or, or a mall or something like that. And we need to be conscientious of that when we try and present that to people.
I'm not sure where we should go. I mean, you need some guidance as to what to have for Monday night. Um, do people want to have a preference? I mean, I would like to narrow it down. I don't think, I mean, obviously, option one, we'd like more information about what the bonding would be, right? What else do we need? Bill?
The, the two things that kind of concern me is, going back to my original point, was things being really tight in, in that parking bag. I just have a, for whatever reason, I, even though they're telling me it fits a need, I can't get beyond it right now. To me, there should be some adequate spacing there because it's too darn tight in there from, from my perspective.
So they won't be able to fit as many in?
Well, I mean, it, it goes back to what Council Dwyer's point is, you know, are we going to come back 20 years from now and be, be looking at, looking to, to tear that down, build something bigger because people can't go in there and maneuver vehicles around? That's a concern that I have. The other, the other piece, point is that it, it was led to us that we have to come up with some idea for our, and maybe I'm wrong for thinking this and I apologize in advance, but that we have to come up with an agreement for having some type of a concept of what they need to move forward when this is the first time that I've seen both three of the, three of these proposals. And I, I want to think about it. I don't feel comfortable saying, I like one, I like two, I like three. I don't like them, I just, I, I'd like some time to, to think about it.
Okay. Tom?
Bill, um, I appreciate your thoughts and, and I agree with a lot of what you're suggesting. Um, I'm a little concerned that we're talking about renovating an old building and then complaining that it's not big enough. Um, I think anything we can get into that old building renovated-wise is, is a wonderful addition to what we have today. And, you know, if they have to leave one of those trucks out in order to give enough space so that people can maneuver in there, um, I don't think that's a big problem. I'm also a little concerned, the picture they showed, those squares were pickup trucks and when I looked, very large. So I'm guessing they already built in extra space for them, for maneuvering. And they had lines in there which looked like walls, which probably don't exist, between the plow trucks and stuff like that. So the, the thing probably looked more crowded than it would in reality be, given trucks that you can offset a little bit and let blades come down, you know, not necessarily edge-to-edge-to-edge kind of thing. So I, I, I'm comfortable that, that renovating that building and being able to use it, regardless of what we can put into it, is worthwhile. And at that price, like Jackie said, it's not that terrible, given that you can continue to use the structure that's there. So I think we got a lot of positives going there.
I appreciate what you're saying, Council Koenig. I'm just, I'm, I'm not at your level of comfort right now. I'm, I'm trying to wrestle with the fact, is, is this going to be an appropriate renovation? Or are we putting lipstick on, lipstick on a pig? That's just what I'm wrestling with right now. And I mean that with no disrespect because like, you know, like Council Dwyer, I love Merrimack. I think we want, we want our community to be indicative of how we care about this community. And to me, you know, people think it's a, a highway garage, no, it's a highway garage. No, it's, it's, it's how we show what we care about our community, what we, what we put into it, this, this, this is an element of pride. And that's really what I'm, I'm, I'm wrestling with right now. Is, is this an appropriate renovation? Should we think, be really, be thinking about something, something a little bit bigger and literally, you know, like we talked about, you know, three years ago, tearing it down and building something new? I'm not advocating that, I'm just saying I'm struggling, just struggling with it.
Dan, you want to say something then, Finley?
I, I'm proposing to move forward and, and say I have my, I have trust in my team. I have trust in the manager, I have trust in the work that Paul's done. I have trust in Kyle. Um, I may not be 100%, but I don't have to be 100%.
But would you like that information for Monday, Paul? As suggested, he'd be happy to work it up.
Sure.
For option one.
But it doesn't stop me from tonight for putting my support for, to go forward on this. And then, and if, um, if Kyle prefers option three, then I'd say, okay, I, I'll go with option three based, based on the team's report. And there were a lot more work than they did than I did.
Finley?
To Tom's point, Bill's commentary on this renovation, this renovation, as I remember, it, it was left like this because there was an ability to put an addition on in the future without much effort. It would be a simple project, um, is what Dave Yakovoff had proposed. I, because I remember that was his real big thing, all these added costs, the extra 10% for all the engineering work and everything else has to go, where the addition is really just, you know, off the edge of it, if, if I remembered it correctly. And we're not going to tear it down. I think it would be foolish to tear it down and get rid of it. And so, um, we're just going to leave a steel structure up with nothing going on. It doesn't make sense either. So that's why I'm in favor of the renovations of the, of the facility.
Jackie, and then Tom.
Um, what do you mean, you're, uh, which option had you?
Well, the, the option, I, I agree with Dan's commentary there because I, I, I want it to look good. If it can made to be look good with the steel, I just want it to be nice as it can be for the neighbors.
Okay.
What I'm talking about is the renovation of our existing facility.
Oh, sure, sure.
The gutting of it and the putting new walls and...
I think we'll be very pleased about that.
Right, and so I think that that, for me, is an easy one that I definitely want to be able to utilize the frame, the skeleton and, and do everything that it proposes.
I also agree with Bill that it does look very crowded, but, um, I, I guess we do have to trust. You know, this isn't even a pig. I, I, it's like the possum that my dog goes after in the yard all the time. And no wonder they only come out at night, they're so, they're so ugly.
Some people think they're cute.
Not when they end up dead on your front step like one I had, I had one about 20 years ago.
Oh dear, it wasn't really dead, it was like possum.
No, it was dead.
It was dead, okay. Back to business here. The, the, I think the nature of this steel building is that it is, has a flat roof of some sort, either a, you know, a shed-type roof or, or flat. Um, I, I don't think there's any, I have this, in my opinion, there's no way to dress it up. I don't think there's any way to dress it up. And, um, I really think, and, and I like the idea of maybe a, a dark color. You know, we might like those pictures of the ice rink or something. I trust that that, um, a timber building will be enough for you. And you know what? If it, if we, if we go to build out, which is like supposedly 35,000 people and we're at, what, 28 now probably, we don't even know it? Um, we're not that far from there. It seems to me that we could either tear, maybe we'll be ready in 20 years to tear down the building, but we'll renovate the old building now or put an addition on. We have plenty of room. I, I, um, yeah, I think that, I think the timber building would be the way to go.
Tom?
Yeah, I, uh, want to thank Council Dwyer for reinforcing the position I've held for a long time on this council is that we need to, to consider the quality of what we're putting together and what we're putting out there. Because when I first came on this council, we were repairing a lot of crap that had been put in in the 80s and 90s because it was cheap and it was quick. And they didn't have to get up and argue about it on the floor at town meeting. Um, and as Dan has said, this council is focused on presenting quality projects to the community um, and dealing with it in a, you know, in a cost-effective manner. And we've been very successful doing that. Um, you know, I, I, I looked at these three concepts and I frankly liked the, the option one uh, because of the fact of the way it would work in, work into the neighborhood, uh, would take away that industrial building. As Dan said, I trust the, the work that they have done to deal with this. I don't think ladder trucks are going to get any longer, or is it option three?
Three.
Option three, okay.
That's where I was.
Option three, I'm sorry. I apologize. It was my option one, but anyway. Um, so I don't think ladder trucks are going to get any longer. Uh, and wait till the argument on that comes up. What's that? Well... Anyway, um, and in looking at the presentation and the work that we've put into this over, what, three years now? Um, you know, uh, like, you know, like you said, the staff that we pay to advise us is telling us that this, that this does meet their needs. And they did work with their employees to come up with this stuff. You know, to come up with these concepts. So I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. In, in how that happens and I think, and it's not, I, I don't, you know, I don't always... I, I've seen a lot of people who come in with a number and work to a number rather than, what am I going to, you know, what's the, what's the best, what's the best quality piece of work I can get for, and what's it going to cost me? Okay? And if it's a, you know, uh, and then, and then, and then figure out if that, how that's going to work out over the lifetime of the building. That's why I started asking the question about the, uh, the heating issues. Okay? You might want to check with the fire department to see what they think are going to happen to ladder trucks because I don't think they get much bigger. You know, the ones with the tillers on the back are about as long as they get. And we don't have them around here. And, uh, you know, uh, so, um, I just, I just, I just prefer, at this point, I prefer that one. It has nothing to do with the cost. It has to do with the accuracy of the building, what it's going to get us, how it's going to look. And I'm not concerned about timber because my house is 209 years old. Okay?
That's because you maintain.
Oh, yes, I do.
That's because you maintain.
Oh, yes, I do. Huh? No, I've got, you go to that old part of that house, those walls are square. All right? You go to the front of the house, it's square, the back end, eh, not so sure.
Yeah, but you're not allowed to smoke inside the house anymore.
Uh, well, I never was allowed to smoke in the house. Okay? Uh, you know, and, and I never smoked that much anyway. So, if I did, I did in the car when I was driving, you know, I... Yes, that's right. So... So anyway, that, that aside, okay? Uh, you know, I just think that that's, I think it presents a good, solid option. It's adequate. It's quality, okay? Uh, don't forget, there's going to be a lot of changes in this building for equipment and stuff that they've got to put in that we don't have now. Where if we have is 40, 40 years old, 40-some-odd years old. So we're going to get efficiencies out of that. Um, and, uh, I just, I just, I'm, I'm satisfied with it. I'm comfortable. I don't have any qualms about it at all.
Okay, well, should I say something?
So are you looking for a motion?
I'll just summarize it. I mean, I, I think I'm hearing a consensus that everybody wants, mostly everybody wants to renovate the prison building. Okay? So no matter what option we're talking about, that's, that's a...
That's a given.
That's a given. So now it's just a matter of, are we prepared to decide upon an option? So if someone wants to make a motion, I'd be receptive. Dan?
Make an option that we instruct...
Make a motion?
Make, make a motion to, uh, to let the team know, uh, that we prefer option three.
Okay, second, motion by Dean Dwyer, second?
Second.
By Tom Mahan. Any further discussion before we take about?
Is that just too soft of a motion? I mean, do we? We prefer... Okay. I mean, if that, Paul, if that's all you guys are looking for tonight is...
That's all we're looking for.
I'm, I'm real happy with the option and, and I think we should go forward with it. I just wanted to make sure we were giving you guys enough comfort level that you're able to work. Okay, never mind.
Does anybody else want a question? Okay. All those in favor of the motion that was made, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. Six, one, zero. Uh, Bill Boyd, opposed.
And Madam Chair, I'm opposing it not because I don't support a new Highway Garage. I don't like being forced to choose after it's been presented to me. Yep, thank you.
Okay, well, you've got your answer. And you don't even have to modify. Now, do, at what point do we decide about what kind of bonding we would go for? Later?
What, what we'll do is, um, it's, it's based on, I'll try to get better, talk to the bond banks, see where they see these bonds going. And I'll come back with, with option of the 20 or the 30 and then we can make a determination before the 9th of, before the 16th of February on which one we want to present.
So you'll come back to us when you have that information?
Yes.
So we can make a decision?
Probably Monday.
Eileen?
Also, Bill, are there any things that we can prepare for you prior to Monday? Um, or they can, uh, do for, for you and, and send to you that would give you more confidence? Because you can, you can ask them any questions that you want and they'll pass it along to their, their architect. Um, I think this is just basically the first, the first stage is, um, going through and deciding whether it's going to be a wood frame building or not um, and whether that's sufficient size or not.
If I have questions, I'll reach out to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nice job, thank you for all the information.
Yes, Kyle.
Yeah, Kyle, Laurie, thank you.
Well, thank you, we've got a great team and, and, uh...
And make sure we keep those maps.
I want to thank all of you sincerely for your great questions tonight and your support.
I want to thank all of you sincerely for your great questions tonight and your support, and it is appreciated. And exactly, that was the next point I wanted to make, was please, if you know of any groups who would like to hear us come and speak about the project, if you have any residents that want to ask us a question, let them know they can call us anytime.
Senior citizens. Do the cable, do the presentation.
Well, I was up in Concord yesterday and spoke to, was speaking with one of our legislators, and he asked me about the garage, and he asked me about the price, and I told him it was going to be the same as last time, and he almost fell out of his chair. How'd you do that?
Because he was thrilled?
Huh? He was surprised that it didn't go up to four million or more.
Did you tell him we do miracles?
No, I just told him I was waiting to hear what the Public Works Director had to say, he was going to do it Thursday night, so hopefully he's watching.
If not, please tell him he can give us a call anytime, and we'd be happy to walk him through it.
We do have to think of as many places as possible.
Absolutely.
To be able to. Now, April is town elections and what else? School.
School and town.
Right.
So really, the, I'm just trying to think of the population, so it'll be a small voting block.
Two grand.
Between two and three.
If we're lucky.
If we're lucky, two grand. That's usually been the rounding number.
But those are the people who are well informed.
Absolutely.
That's the core. We just have to get them over the...
Magic number is 1666.
So when the public, if the public thinks of any place that a presentation should be done with questions asked, because there'll be questions, please contact Eileen, or suggestions about where it should be presented. You know, those people who were not for it, what do you need to know? What's the information you need to know? And how do we get that to you? Do we have a night here? Will we open it up to the public, that kind of thing too, perhaps?
And if people don't want to pick up the phone, they can contact us via our Facebook page or by email. We'll respond to any communications we get.
Excellent. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Larry. Nice work.
Thank you, Larry, Kyle. Okay, let's move on to minutes for January 9th.
Madam Chair, move the January 9, 2017 minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Monahan. Any changes or corrections? None, okay. All those in favor of the minutes of January 9th, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Seven, zero, zero. Comments from the press? None. We haven't had the press here in a long time. Comments from the public? They've all retired. Comments from the council? Saying none. Go ahead, Tom.
I know it was mentioned previously, but just, the planning board did meet on the expansion or the addition in the lower level, so-called Monahan additions, where Monahan, who originally sold the property to the Merrimack Premium Outlets, is buying that piece back and developing it. The planning board did grant a conditional use approval, which allows him some flexibility in how he utilizes that land as far as industrial, residential, and commercial. Because the plans he brought forward look like they fit well into that area, will attract the kind of additional combination of residential and retail and industrial that we're looking for, and be an addition or an appeal to that area with respect to the mall and things of that nature. So the addition of the hotel, and I realize it impacts the neighborhood somewhat, but they are talking a lot about the buffering and how they're going to handle that to avoid impacting folks that live there. And we will get more time to talk to them about exactly what their plans are, because this just gives them approval to go forward. They still have to come through and get approval for each and every site plan that they want to develop there. There's talk of a hotel, a retail building or two, including restaurants, three residential buildings that would have underground parking for them, and then shared parking for the rest of the facility. And it would be quite a little interesting complex there. And they're definitely talking about phasing it to where they get some of the retail in early on, restaurants and retail outlets and things of that nature. So it comes across very excitingly. Usually, they don't come out quite that good, but it sounds so good that it's hard to not have at least some confidence that what they're going to put in there will work out very well for Merrimack. And that was the biggest impact from the latest planning board, and I just wanted to bring that up again. Yes?
Have a question for Tom, for me. The emergency access point off of Camp Sager Road is not going to be, is going to continue to be an emergency access, or will they be using that as an entrance?
They will, it will continue to be a gated emergency access point, but they will be using that lane as part of the lane into their facility, so...
For customer travel or for freight?
Yeah, so the road that's there will be used as part of the facility, but the gate will still be intact and still in control, so that you can't drive through to that neighborhood.
Right, so the emergency road stays intact?
It stays intact. It will be incorporated as part of the overall, yeah, it comes into the rotary, it'll be incorporated as part of the overall project, but the cutoff, the access cutoff, still be there.
Because I've had people voice concern in the neighborhood, not from you.
No, but they've said that clearly almost every minute.
Oh, yeah.
They've been asked and they've reiterated that, that stays the emergency entrance, that the entrance to it will be from the main entrance.
From the current rotary, or the current...
Will be rotary.
It will be a rotary, yeah, right where it turns to go up the hill.
Right.
They're going to be putting a rotary in there, and it'll go up to that space and/or up to the mall.
Great, thank you very much, Tom.
Any other comments? Saying none. Motion to adjourn?
So moved, seconded.
Whatever, take your choice.
Bill Boyd, Tom Monahan, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seven, zero, zero.